All right, well, let's go ahead and call our work session to order. I'll start off with a review of tonight's agenda. I'll pause after different items for you to ask any clarification questions or give staff a heads up. A public comment, Jeff, we haven't had anybody submit for online yet, right?
No, we've not.
All right, great. And their presentations, we're going to have the opioid settlement from Clackamas County Public Health. On our consent agenda, we have our city council meeting minutes from our city council meeting on November twenty first. Under old business, we have our bull run terrorist reconsideration. New business, we have Nellie De Vries here, government relations priorities conversation. And then Sandy net CBX residential IGA amendment. We'll then have a report from Jordan, our city manager will do our committee and council reports. And then a reminder that we do have an executive session at the end of our meeting this evening. And with that, Jeff, we call the roll.
Yes, Councilor Pete's here, Councilor Smallwood.
Here.
Councilor Sheldon, here, Councilor Walker.
Here.
Councilor Exner.
Um, I don't see him here yet, but he may amend that.
Okay, Councilor Hopkinson.
Here.
Mayor Pullin.
Here. All right, folks, we're here to meet in a work session to meet on our water system master plan. Uh, Jordan, Jenny.
And Jenny will be doing the introductions. Jenny Coker, Public Works Director. We also have Brian Ginter and Jeff Fox from Consort. Did the water master plan that we'll be doing the bulk of the presentation today.
Awesome, welcome.
Thank you. Well, um, as you said, we're here tonight to present the findings of the water system master plan. The team here, including Brian Ginter and Jeff Fox with Consort, which was formerly Murray Smith. I've done a tremendous amount of work in the last six months and we have a very robust plan here. And I also really want to thank AJ Thorn as well as Ryan and Joe from the Public Works Team who've, you know, contributed to this plan. These are due every twenty years and as I think you would have seen in the staff report, this was a milestone that is a requirement of our bilateral compliance agreements. And the good news is we did submit this in parallel to Oregon Health Authority right before Thanksgiving. And we already have received their concurrence on this plan. So this plan is the key to getting funding to move ahead with these projects. So the goal to tonight is to present your findings, make sure you are get your feedback on the direction and conclusions. And then our goal, if possible, would be to bring it before council on December nineteenth to finalize the plan. Once that is completed, we'll do a parallel process through planning commission and adopt it to incorporate into the comprehensive plan. With that, I will introduce Brian, are you going to be leading off?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm going to go ahead and share my screen here. All right, hopefully we're all seeing a cover slide of the presentation now. All right, we'll get started. So just jump right in here and start with what's the agenda for this presentation. So we'll walk through what the purpose and overview of the water system master plan is. Then spend a little time describing the water system, the water demand forecast that are presented in there. Talk about the distribution system analysis, water supply analysis, capital improvements and next steps. This follows very closely with the order of the plan document itself. So very similar to that outline. So why do we do a water system master plan? Well, one, it is a planning resource for city staff and council to guide decisions for the water system. It's meant to document system components for both staff and for the public. It outlines a plan for what system improvements need to be made, which is really important because then that shows what the financial impact of those improvements are going to be so the city can plan for that financially. And then always required and important part is the state requires you to do it. You have to have a current water system master plan. And so it was time for the city to do it to meet that regulatory requirement. So what's in the master plan? Again, introduction and inscription of the system is where it starts. Then we look at how much water is needed and where is it needed? We've got criteria that we're going to use to analyze the system. There is the analysis of the system that I'll walk you through. We look at water supply as well, which is a big piece of it. And then finally, the part that really matters is the capital improvement plan. When do, when do investments need to be made in the water system and how much are they going to cost? Well, just start with the existing water system. So this is a plan view map of the city of Sandy's water system. The city's water service area is the entirety of the UGB. That's the yellow dashed line that's shown there. And the water system serves three wholesale customers in addition to about four thousand services around the city through seventy miles of pipe. Three water sources, Alder Creek and Brownell Springs are city owned sources to the southeast of the city. And then the wholesale supply from the Portland Water Bureau coming from the north of the city. We also illustrate the system a little differently in this hydraulic schematic. So we use this to understand how water moves around the system. In particular, how it flows through the system by gravity or is pumped. And so the one thing that I wanted to highlight here is that the Portland Water Bureau connection down in the lower left hand corner, the wholesale supply is pumped into the system, into the revenue reservoir, and then pumped again up to the distal loop reservoir. From that location, it can serve the pressure zones that are below that level. Whereas the Alder Creek and Brownell Springs sources of both are pumped up to the top of the system in the Sandra Cock Lane Reservoir, and they can serve all of the zones in the system. And we'll come back to that a little later, but that's an important thing as we think about water supply in the future and reliability of the system. So then the next piece, so a little time on is the water demand forecast. And so we forecast future water demands kind of based on the continued growth that the city's expected to see to understand how much water is going to be needed in the future and where. For the city of Sandy, because most of the water use is residential, about three quarters of it, we're able to use the forecasted growth in the city's population as our basis for future water demands. So the graph on the right is illustrating two things. The green line corresponds to the Y axis on the right, and that's the forecasted population over our planning horizon. And then the three red lines of different type are the future water demands. And what we see is that, now we look at, sorry, we look at water demands three ways primarily in our analysis. The most important is the maximum day demand. So that's the most, you know, how much water is expected to be used on that hottest day in the summer, typically late July, although lately it's kind of back to to sometimes in June, but that hottest day in the summer, when the most water is being used, that's going to drive the capacity we need for a lot of facilities. We also look at peak week demand to get an idea of, you know, how much buffer do you have below maximum day, below the maximum day demand condition at times to get through a longer, more sustained event that's going to be, you know, not quite as much water usage. And then finally, average day demand, which is taking all of the water used over the entire year, divided it by three hundred and sixty five days. So we understand what's the average amount of usage in the system. And what we typically see in Sandy is no different is that the difference between that average usage and that maximum day demand usage is close to about two times. So people use about twice as much water in the summer on that peak day than they do during the average day. And so that really does drive a lot of our capacity needs. And we see that with the population growth, the maximum day demand is expected to grow, you know, pretty significantly over our planning horizon, and we need to plan for that. So we take the, the water demands that we, that we've identified and forecasted, and we go ahead and walk through our analysis of the future system. And there's really five components of the distribution system that we'll look at. I'll talk through each of these here one at a time. The first is the pressure zone. So again, this is similar to the map you saw at the beginning. The system's divided up into pressure zones that regulate pressure to acceptable ranges. So customers don't have too high or too low pressures. So typically the reservoirs that are in the system set the pressure for each individual zone and or a booster pump station serving them. Sandy system largely is again flowed down from the top through pressure regulators. And what we're seeing here is that the system's been laid out pretty efficiently already. And so expansion to the limits of the urban growth boundary is really just a matter of extending the existing pressure zones out to those limits as growth occurs. So there's not a need for development of additional zones or changing of zone boundaries in the future. The next component is distribution system storage. So storage is provided in the water system for four primary purposes. The first is operations. So that's to allow sources to be turned on and turned off. Pumps in particular will cycle. And so we need a certain volume of storage for the difference between the on and off set points so that those facilities can operate efficiently. The next is equalizing. People use more water typically between six AM and nine AM in the morning and again between five and seven thirty in the evening. And we don't want to have to provide instantaneous supply from your supply sources for those events. And so the storage provides a buffer for that, for that event drawing down during those peak times and then filling back up during the times of day when less water is used. The third component is fire flow. We want to have sufficient water available and storage to fight a fire event. And then the fourth is an emergency. If your supply is disrupted for any reason, this gives you a volume of water that's available so that you can continue to provide service to customers until supply sources can be brought back online. These are generally short term events. And so they're not, it's not meant to be emergency storage for days and days without supply, something that we'll talk a bit more later. But for those short term events so that you can get through a peak day essentially with the, the storage that's there. And the city's system currently has just a little under five million gallons of storage. And we're seeing that there's a, there's a storage deficit today. And of course that grows as demands grow in the future. This is pretty typical. So you'll see a recommended improvement for it, but this isn't a cause for alarm. Water systems typically operate either with a small surplus or a deficit for a period of time because it is a balance between having enough storage to meet all of these requirements and having too much, which can result in issues with water quality as you get higher residence times in the systems, the water sits longer in the, in the water system. For pumping, we'll revisit the hydraulic profile. So overall, the system has adequate pumping capacity. The one key issue I mentioned is that the Portland Water Bureau supply can't be transmitted up to the customers in what we call Zone X and Zone One, the two highest level zones in the system, generally in the southeast corner of the, of the city. And so we're recommending an improvement to put in pumping capacity at the Vista Loop Reservoir to move that water up to those highest levels so that if the Alder Creek and Brownell Springs sources are disrupted for some reason, customers aren't without water. For pipeline capacity, we build a computerized hydraulic model of the water system that essentially simulates flow and pressure at any point in the system. And we test the system under those maximum day demand conditions with a simultaneous fire flow event at all the locations where there are fire hydrants to see if the adequate pressure can be maintained. Overall, the city system is pretty robust, like one of the more, more robust systems I think I've ever modeled. And so what we saw were just only a few deficiencies in the system. One is a long bluff road, and there were a couple of other short locations where there's some recommended improvements. The bluff road one in particular, I think, has some potential for considering alternatives to upsizing the pipe, given that your large Portland Water Bureau Supply Transmission Main runs along that corridor. And so that's one of the things that I think we'll want to look at moving forward into pre-design is, is there an opportunity potentially to ship the hydrants over to that line as opposed to building another new large diameter main there? That line isn't currently serving distribution, so that would be a change in operations that would need to be discussed, but could provide some cost savings. You'll see later in the CIP, we're assuming a new main today for initial analysis, but definitely something worth considering going forward. And then the last component is, is renewal and replacement. So we don't just look at capacity needs. We also want to make sure that the city is planning for the eventual need to replace the system as it ages and begins to fail. The goal is about 1.3% of the system piping per year. That's a seventy five year replacement cycle. That's almost a mile of pipe a year, which is pretty aggressive. I will tell you that very few systems are achieving this, but the key is to start to work towards it and make sure that there is some budget being built in each year to plan for replacement because otherwise we are just kicking down the road, a, a problem that's going to have to be dealt with. And when we're reactive instead of proactive, it is much more expensive to deal with the consequences. And so we really want to get out ahead of that. You could put a lot of pipe in the ground for the cost of a, you know, call out on the weekend, a call out in the middle of the night to fix a leak, repair the road, do those kinds of things. And so being proactive about it is really important. And then we're focused here on primarily asbestos cement pipe, cast iron and small four inch diameter mains in the twenty year planning horizon, targeting the second half of that horizon, about thirteen and a half years to replace those high priority pipes, all of which have been prone to failure and are a bigger risk to the city. And then jumping into water supply sources, talking a minute, minute about existing supply sources. So the city's two supply sources that are owned are Alder Creek and the Brownell Springs. And these have been historically really reliable sources of supply, low O and M costs. However, a lot of the infrastructure is aging, is reaching the end of it, or it's at the end of its service life. And so staff and your contract offer, operators have done a great job keeping these facilities running, but they really are at the point where major renewal and replacement is going to be required. So that really is the thing to take away here is while this is a high value, your high value systems, investment's going to be needed to continue to maintain them into the future. The city's Portland Water Bureau Wholesale Supply, I think we've talked about this a few times with you before, but just to recap on the highlights. Portland is building a new filtration plant that they're required to buy an agreement with OHA to meet surface water treatment rules. That plant needs to be in service by fall of twenty twenty seven, which means that your current treated water supply will not be available when your contract expires in May twenty twenty eight without constructing improvements. Your connection point today is on what will become a raw water pipeline. And so there'll be a need to relocate that connection up to the, the treatment plant. And we've talked before about the options of raw water versus finished water and ultimately purchasing finished water has a better lifecycle cost and provides more benefit. Again, we talked about that with you back in May of twenty twenty two and can revisit any of that as needed. We did look at other supply sources before just moving forward with continuing what you have and the Portland Water Bureau connection. So I wanted to recap those. The two are, one, the Salmon River, which the city has water rights on. The challenge here is that the development potential requires a lot of further investigation and permitting and construction is really like probably a ten year project at a minimum. And it's really the permitting process is pretty significant in order to site and construct a new intake for taking water out of the Salmon River as well as the transmission main to bring it back to town. So while it does have some potential for the city's long-term future needs, it doesn't address the short term need of being able to replace the Portland Water Bureau Supply before twenty twenty eight. The, the other option we looked at was development of local groundwater. It's a couple of challenges with that. The biggest one, well, there's some uncertainty about the ability to obtain water rights to put wells in and take water out of the ground. The other is that there's a lot of uncertainty about capacity. There are not many wells in the area. And what we do know is that the capacity is likely less, likely to be less than a half a million gallons per day per well. So it's a very expensive exploratory program to find out whether or not there's potential. And the likelihood that you'd be able to develop enough local groundwater to truly replace one of your other supply sources is pretty low. So it's a high risk, limited reward opportunity. So as we look at the vulnerability of the supply system, this is going to help us to develop the strategy for development of water supply to improve your your reliability. And we looked at a number of events, real events that have happened recently to the city. So the Portland Water Bureau turbidity event that happened just this last month, winter storm power outages, PGE's fire prevention power outages, you had those in September, the potential for drought impacting curtailment of supply. And there's other things that could disrupt Portland Water Bureau supply. And what we're showing with the simple kind of color scheme is the consequence of each of these events happening under current conditions where you receive unfiltered supply from Portland at the Hudson Intertie, and then you have your existing Alder Creek facilities versus what it would look like with the Portland Water Bureau filtration plant connection online and upgraded Alder Creek facilities. And you see that we moved essentially from red and yellow, so high to medium consequence to fairly low consequence because of the, the reliability that comes with these improved facilities, including, I think, an important feature of this filtration plant connection is that Portland Water Bureau will have the ability to move groundwater back from their well field that developed, that produces about ninety million gallons a day. They'll be able to move water from that well field back to the treatment plant, which means you'll have access to not just the bull run supply, but also that backup supply source that, that serves the water bureau. So you'll essentially have two supplies from the wholesale connection as well as your Alder Creek supply and Brownell Springs. So what is our recommended water supply strategy? Because I alluded to there, the first is you need to develop the infrastructure to maintain your Portland Water Bureau wholesale supply. What we see is that in twenty twenty eight in this graph, and I'm sorry, this is pretty messy. So this is max data man, as we saw earlier, which is what's going to drive supply source. We see that you can't get by on just Alder Creek and Brownell Springs alone by twenty twenty eight. The max data man exceeds the capacity. So you need an alternate supply source. You need access to that Portland Water Bureau supply. And so by twenty twenty eight, having that online is going to be critical. So that's the, the key first recommendation is move forward with that immediately. The second is to evaluate Alder Creek and Brownell Springs to determine what the near term and long term investment requirements are. I said there at the end of their useful life, this really requires a pretty thorough investigation of all of the facilities to determine if any of them can be renewed or if it's significant replacement that's required to really understand what is the cost to maintaining those supplies and to verify that it's warranted through, you know, kind of confirmation of that benefit. What's the cost going to be? How much less expensive is that water to produce versus buying wholesale water? So you optimize your operations there. And then assuming that it proves out that Alder Creek, maintaining Alder Creek is worthwhile, we believe it to be the case. You construct those near term improvements, then look at what your long term supply options are, and then ultimately complete those long term supply improvements. So the city can have control of their long term supply plan in the future.
What was it? Jenny, did you have a question you wanted to chime in?
Yeah, thank you. I, I wanted to talk a little bit more about the, the vulnerability. And Councilor Walker had emailed some questions in at the last minute, which I, which Brian was trying to address. One of the additional benefits with going to Portland is suddenly we're tapped into the entire regional network. And when we did an exercise for a major service disruption, Brian and Jeff, can you chime in? But I believe that we're connected to Gresham and Rockwood as well. They could turn on their back, their backup groundwater wells. And indeed, they did in an exercise. So just, we just increased our reliability so much. And then you asked about the capacity of the wells. Brian, Brian did answer that question. The other key pieces, yeah, the well, the groundwater, the South Shore well fields can produce between eighty and ninety five million gallons per day. And currently, the average daily demand for Portland and all the wholesalers is eighty five million gallons per day. And there's now a deficit with Gresham and Rockwood and TVWD leaving of nearly twenty eight MGD, which is called the reserve capacity. The bottom line is there is plenty of room and we are also going through the exercise to hear out what ranges we need to give to tap into that. And just to go further, since I've been here, Portland had a, a labor strike. It was my third day on the job and we were cut off and it really wasn't a problem because it was the winter and, you know, we weathered through it. But this turbidity event was not something I expected. You know, this is the lower demand season, but it also impacted Alder Creek because those facilities have not been, you know, we haven't reinvested in them for ten years. And, you know, looking through the history of how often this has occurred at Bull Run, it does happen periodically for these extended. I mean, I'd say it's about every four or five years, there is an extended period. You know, Bull Run, you probably know more than I do. I mean, we have the same fire risk. And so what is Portland going to do? I mean, they're gonna, they're going to go back to the groundwater. So it really comes into having that groundwater source. And I really wish we would find one here. It would be simpler, but it's just with the time constraints we're under. And Brian summed it up well. Right now, both Alder and our Portland, they, they're subject to the same, you know, vulnerabilities. And that makes our, our supply really precarious. We have Brownell Springs and Brownell Springs is wonderful. But it, it does get, we do get curtailed to our senior rights, which, you know, in, in the winter season, well, no. But in the high summer season, that's, you know, maybe five percent of our supply. So it's a good thing to have, but yeah, we, we really are trying to move to having much more reliable supply for the city. And so the Portland connection and tapping into the larger region does that for us. The downside is that water is really expensive, which is why we do need to explore more at Alder Creek, confirm the flows. We do have a record in two thousand nine, the only time the city went into curtailments. Alder Creek recorded a production of two point four six MGD, which to me is really encouraging. That was thirteen years ago. So as Brian said, there's additional investigation we need to do. We need to confirm. Now we need to do the, we need to do the supply pipe to Alder Creek. We've determined more since we talked in May. But I like the idea of maintaining our independence, having alternate supply, and that water is, it's free. We don't pay for the water, we pay for the treatment. But I do think we have a very solid plan right now, and, and that is what we are working towards.
And all the while, we can continue to go after and look at potential for ground resource, but also that Sam Creek option, correct? Or Salmon River, excuse me.
Yeah, like Brian said, I really think we're looking long term, thirty, forty years out. I see the potential for that being really important to the region. I mean, while I'm dreaming, I see the ability for Sandy actually to sell back to the larger region. But as he said, it's just, we really are under a time crunch. We can't do that right now, but we want to make sure that that is not lost and we pick that up. And you'll see it in the capital improvement program. We want to figure that out. We want, you know, the land acquisition. We want to start moving on this and we have time, but you know, we want to think long term as well.
I would just add one other comment. The Bull Run, of course, they're not doing any logging in the Bull Run for, since about nineteen eighty nine, I think. So, because I was there. Anyway, the, the Alder Creek watershed, though, I know we, in the Forest Service Plans designated as a special office watershed in the Forest Service Park, but I also know that there's some private timberlands in there. So one of the things that I hope these guys are looking at is the, kind of the, the whole watershed. And what will bite us is the logging of those private lands in there and just awareness of what anything that Forest Service plans to do. I, I don't think there's any BLM lands, but there might be a little bit of BLM there. So, but definitely the private timberlands that are managed for that. They might, I don't think there's any county, but anyways, looking at the ownership and what the logging plans are, because that, that turbidity issue, you know, is obviously an issue in the winter with the storms. But it gets even worse when you, you know, freshly logged something, then, you know, what might not be a problem if it was totally forested becomes a problem. So just looking at that timber management plans in the next thirty years and what the makeup is of that and what the setbacks are from streams, things like that.
All right, I, I did interrupt Brian's flow. Brian, do you want to keep going?
It's okay, no problem. Okay. So the capital improvement program has three primary areas of focus. The first is obviously water supply reliability. As we talked about, that's the most critical thing. The second is to provide for development and make sure the development is paying their fair share. So it's an important thing that we identify what improvements are required for development that gets built into system development charges. And that we're both planning for development and make sure development's doing their part. And then finally, improving the resilience of the existing system. So here's the, here's the, here's the scary part. It, it is, the capital improvement program's always challenging. It's front loaded in this case largely because of the need for the supply investment. So what we have is improvements broken up into, into five categories and then split over three planning horizon timelines. The first is the high priority improvements, the first five years, then the next five year block, six to ten, and then finally the eleven to twenty year block. In the early years, all of the investment is tied up in largely the Alder Creek Treatment Plan improvements and the filtered water supply connection to the Portland Water Bureau, which are both significant improvements and are going to require, you know, funding strategies, loans and other things to be able to, to, to complete those projects. Then beyond that, we see Then beyond that, uh, we see a much more typical budget, the most significant investment being the the storage improvements that are needed in the next fifteen years. As well as starting into the annual replacement program. Uh, so this is. This is a large CIP because of the supply improvements that are needed, but not not atypical uh of a city of this size. So what are the next steps? Uh, one is approval by the state drinking water program with the water system master plan. As Jenny already noted, we've already received. Incurrence from the state, so that first one's been checked. And my lights just went off. Uh, council, there we go, council review and adoption of the water system master plan. So again, this is the first step in that process. Uh, continue with the wholesale contract negotiations with the Portland Water Bureau to make sure that. That the contract is as fair as possible and the rates are managed to the extent that they can be. Uh, update your water rates and system development charges based on this capital improvement. Plans, project costs to make sure again that that the revenue is there uh to support the improvements. And that the costs are being allocated appropriately between existing customers and future customers. Uh, right away acquisition permitting and design of the supply pipeline uh and pump station that's required to get the port, what the filtered. Wholesale supply to the city, uh, confirm all decree improvements, and then finally implement. The near term capital improvement project. So a lot of, a lot of work for the city, uh, really in the next five years. These next steps are all a big deal and it's. And it's a lot of improvements. And I went through a lot fast, so without, stop talking and take any questions.
Any questions?
On your time, excuse me, on your timeline, the next five years, we have a deadline. That we have to meet, right? For regulatory reasons there. But as we know, for all the construction we've done around Sandy and in other things that involved with. Supply chain issues, um. Hiring contract, getting people to bid on things, um. Kind of under the gun, under the pressure, like, I feel like should have started yesterday on building or having a contract, and I know. It's just timelines, we can always say that, right? But I guess my point is, is, you know, I won't be on council here at the end of the month. Is don't delay for me to sign something like. Yesterday. This, I think there's a big. I'd hate to see us get to a point where we're we're ready, we got everything lined up, and then no one bidding on a contract or. By teen issues has delayed things a few months or a year, like we've seen in some other projects.
Um, may I respond to councillor Pete Sol? We did hit this in the staff report and honestly, Brian and Jeff has have been on me. You're right, we we're behind in getting this done due to a lot of reasons.
But I'm not faulting you.
Oh, no, I it's.
Courage.
I'm blaming the pandemic, but we. No, but but the truth is, the the truth is. It will be a push to do this by September of twenty twenty seven. I still think it is possible to do, but. If we had six years, I'd have a lot more confidence. I can tell you what we have done in the last six months is we've recognized this. We have been working in parallel this entire time. We advertised an RFQ for program management services. We scored and we have been scoping this work. Ideally, I'll be on a schedule to bring this to you December nineteenth, and they start January second. The other thing I have learned recently is unfortunately, there just isn't as much loan money available for water projects as wastewater projects. In fact, there's only about twenty five percent. And it's so little that if they gave the ask to a city in Southern Oregon, no one else would get any. And we did also in parallel, thanks to Jeff and other parts of the Barney Worth and consort team. We applied for drinking water SRF funds in September. It was of critical importance to get this in, so hopefully we get an award and have money in the spring. At the same time to manage that risk, we also are applying to Business Loan Oregon where we. Feel fairly confident we can get up to ten million dollars because we need the money right now to. Make the progress. There's survey, there's land use, there's many things to be done, there's grants to be applied for. And so we're trying to manage those risks as as we come in, and so far we have been successful. And as for. This is a very, very attractive project, and we've also been meeting with some of the best engineers in the region. Lot of contractors are in interested, so I'm not so worried about that, but. Yeah, it's. This is critically important and, you know, they have been giving us very good advice. On um Monday, we are meeting with Pleasant Home Water Districts. You've been made aware, they were part of the land use application for Portland filtration, and it looks like there's some opportunities for cost sharing or maybe easements. With them, so I I promise you, this is our number one. But as you know, there is a lot going on, especially with wastewater. So, but it, this is very real, uh, but you know, we're nimble. We don't have a bureaucracy. Sort of our joking, our joke sometimes is we're working towards one, but you know, but I mean, we can also come to you in five days. And a lot of that, I think, is, you know, Jeff, Jordan, Tyler, me. Yeah, we, we will work to make this.
You guys are doing amazing, all of you are, and I appreciate it, all of you. So, so yeah, I think they thank you when we see that, we know that. I was just making the comment to my fellow councillors here. Don't delay and we need to strike where the iron is hot, and it sounds like you're teeing everything up for us to do that.
Well, we we have a lot of. Honestly, support in the community, people from Gresham and the consortium and Portland consultants. I mean, people knew in June that we needed to get an RFP out for, I mean, it wasn't even on my radar, so. You know, there's a large community that wants to help us, wants to be successful. These two have been amazing. Um, we are also. Working proactively on some of the deficiencies at Alder Creek as we speak. You know, and hoping to have more to report there. So on all the different levels. Yeah, we're trying to be as prepared as we can.
So I just want to explore a little bit on the revenue streams, just to clarify. So you said grants are last, not necessarily lending. Like we can still go get with, yeah, there's still a lot of low interest. Lending available for these kinds of projects.
Thank you. I I think I misspoke. The the drinking water SRF. Is not as well funded as the wastewater sister side that we've been primarily using. But you are correct, there is with you funding, we could do bond, there are. Other grant programs, the grants are smaller that I've seen, and we will definitely be going after those.
But that's, but that's a big reason why we'll be talking about in our meeting later, but why you want to prioritize. Water infrastructure ask over wastewater. Anything else?
Mayor, there's a couple, a couple of councillor hands up.
Oh, sorry to see those. Yeah, please, Dawn, and then Carl. Apologize, guys. I'll get better at looking at the screen.
Well, Carl was first, so if you want to, you can take him. He says he doesn't care. Okay, so uh if we go back to um the slide, um. I don't know, the bar graph, water supply, recommended water supply strategy. If you could reshare that, I think it's three or four slides back. There's a real interesting point that happens around twenty twenty eight that I think we have to recognize. And that is with the shut off, and we've talked about it before, but I just want to make sure it's clear in everybody's head. If we don't do anything in twenty twenty eight. We won't be able to tap into that Portland water and we will have shut offs. We will have curtailments or shortages on on hot days. And it'll just grow thereafter. So I just think that's that's an important point that's just not really debatable. It's just kind of. What's going to happen. The only thing that could change that. Is I guess if our moratorium or something were to go way out and this red line is slowly decreased, but even then we would still have a deficit. Of some degree, it would just be less. The second question then is, I I thought I saw in the staff report, um, an expectation of the rate increases that are expected. Can you go over that again?
Yeah, yeah, Don, one second. Jenny wanted to respond to the first part, and then we'll jump to the second.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I I think it's really important to. To clarify what that means. Department of Health will not shut us off from that water, but we would have to tell people to boil it. Or we would have to mobilize resources to design and construct an interim system, which I would prefer not to do because. It's a temporary solution and diverts funds away from a more permanent one.
Now, the rate increase, part of the staff reported, um. It, I think it was back in June and July, Ju- June, and then the council implemented, or the city implemented the rate increase in July. I think it was a forty one or forty three percent for that rate model. And then we, we also talked about the rate model of the out years implementing these two large capital programs with the transmission line and the Alder Creek improvements. Showed additional forty percent rate increases, but that was based on. Kind of the the preliminary analysis from the water master plan. If you look at the CIP, those numbers have already changed. And so. You know, every, every time we update that math, the 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 rate model, those numbers will will be updated as well. Um, but similar to wastewater, you know, rate increases, um, you know, are projected and anticipated, but. Grant funding, you know, loans like with you and stuff can change that outlook. I think that rate model was based off, which is straight revenue.
Yeah, and. For those of you who pay attention, and I know some of you too, um, we had included an eighty eight million for really the next five years. I was also pretty surprised at the costs of the the storage increases in the out years, but they hadn't developed the CIP at the time. So, yes, we will be updating this, um. And their estimates, uh, they've been taking as constructed costs, so these are much, I think, more. Accurate estimates to have in a plan.
All right, Carl. Or I'm sorry, Dawn, Dawn, was that sufficient? Did you have a follow?
Yeah, I was just gonna say thank you.
Carl, we we can't hear you, bud. It got unmute. There you go.
There it is. Okay, can you hear me now? I have a couple of uh comments and then a question. First off, um, we need to look at all of the possibilities. That will give us. Uh, more wat- drinking water as we move along. But on, and contrast to that, and then a pressure back from that is, is that we can't go after some of the little bitty things that. Are high, so I think Ryan mentioned high risk. Lo- lo- low ability to re- get return, and those things are just. Just too much for us to take on, knowing that we have staff limitations. Uh, looks like we have grant limitations. I don't, I don't want to saddle the city with a whole bunch more loans that I know. Will create a lot of rate increases that we're going to hear a lot of screaming from. So in that response, I guess I'm concerned that we don't look at some of these things in ways that, um. We take the low, low hanging fruit for sure first, move our way down that list of priorities and let those things that are. High risk, let them slide for the moment. And worry about the small things as we go through the process, as we see that they are becoming problems. Secondly, um, as we move through the, some of these solutions, and some of them are going to happen quicker than others. I would think that twenty twenty eight. Crisis, I guess I'll call it crisis point. Uh, would get expanded out. So we'll, as we get things done with. Uh, Brunel and Alder, those things, those are capacity increases that will help us keep us from crashing at. The earlier date and move out that date. My guess is that is important to know about. As we see those things, uh, we accomplished. The the big question I have for Jenny and Jordan is. Can we get this thing done? I mean. When we first talked about all the wastewater work, it it was pretty massive, pretty overwhelming. And now we're throwing on, in my mind, equivalent. Project uh with the wastewater. All about do about the same kind of period of time. I think we really need to look at what we are doing as a city. Make sure we take care of the things that are going to really hit us hard and maybe. Not play with the stuff that takes a lot of time. And I think that's a really important thing that the council needs to look at. But uh, uh, Jordan or Jenny, um, how how are you looking at those kind of? Consequences.
I I know Jenny has a lot of thoughts on this. Uh, it's pretty substantial, um, for a city of our size to take on uh these two large capital projects. And we've, I think we've touched on this before. Um, you can get the sense from Jenny, I think, from uh all the presentations and the contracts in front of you of how many plates. She has spinning, um, and that means a lot of contract oversight, contractor oversight, um, you know, program managers. Owners representatives, um, and we, you know, we're at a point where we've started to add staff. We're going to need more. These are large capital projects. We have three sixty second going, by the way. We have other road projects that are in our CIP. We have a stormwater. Program that we need to pivot to as well. Um, it's a lot to handle. It's a lot to handle for one staff person. Um, we've long outgrown the size of our our public works department, engineering department to handle. This type of workload, um, and they just happened, we just drew the luck of the cards, uh, to, um, you know, projects that are. Regulatoryly required to be completed essentially at the same time, um, without a whole lot of a choice, um, to to execute and deliver them. So. I I imagine through the budget process, you'll probably see us talk a little bit more about organizational capacity. Um, and how we manage these projects going forward. I think Jenny's done an outstanding job of. Equipping the department with the right folks at the table, in terms of engineering firms and the program manager that will help us deliver these projects. Um, that you'll see coming up uh at a future meeting, executing that contract. Um, and that will, that will help us tremendously, but we also need city staff oversight of of these projects and delivering. Overseeing all the contractors and and the and the like. So I appreciate the question because uh it's a daily conversation in these halls of. Um, like Jenny said, we're nimble, we're flexible, uh, we're not bureaucratic, but. Um, we also need to do things the right way and not set ourselves up to fail, um, in future years and kicking ourselves that. We didn't have enough investment in staff to make sure that we delivered these projects appropriately.
Well, that's, that's important to know that you know about it, but and I know you've had conversations with me about making sure this is thought through, but. We, we need to make sure we don't end up overwhelming staff, not making deadlines, uh, being able to. Respond to people as a new crisis shows up that we hadn't anticipated before. Giving ourselves a little bit of slack as we push through these next half decade or so. Uh, and then one, one last question, and I'll get off because my throat's starting to hurt now a lot, is. Uh, I haven't heard a lot about conversation about conservation. And I, and I don't want to push it too hard because I know that may be in a category of a lot of investment. N- not a big uh return back from uh what we're hoping to get. But are are we just ignoring it entirely, or is there a a facet of that? I know this is a Brian question or Jenny's, but. I I do think that our people would be happy to, or at least want to try conservation of some kind, some efforts in this area.
Thank you, part of Chancellor X. It's a, it's a key part of our overall strategy, and it is a requirement from DOH as well as our agreement with Portland that we have a water. Conservation plan. We we've actually read it, and we're actually already working on that with the development code. You know, Jordan shares the goal of having a beautiful city. We want to be friendly city, but. Just the cost of water is going up for everyone. So we've talked about policies for developments that are. Be friendly, like maybe Mediterranean style landscaping, zero escaping, so. It's, it's part of the strategy to kind of bend down that curve of the max daily demand. Because, you know, that's what we're trying to manage overall. And I mean, the other piece in the next couple of years is there's a lot of education on just. Emergency preparedness. I mean, I know a lot of people here experience power outages and, you know, whether they have candles or a generator. Just getting that education out about having a certain amount of water in your home, just in case. But yes, uh, as part of the CIP, we are due to have a water uh conservation plan update in twenty twenty five. I believe is the plan, and uh we are trying to integrate with development services as well as planning.
Thank you.
Any other questions before we?
Do you think Portland's going to get all their stuff done in five years and and? Second question follow up is, are they going to get an extension? They don't. Um, or to affect us?
Everything I've heard and seen is that they will finish on time and they will be going through a six to nine month. Commissioning and testing period. Yeah, there's. Yeah, they will be done, they have to be done.
There's a lot of federal push for that project, too. There's a lot of federal heat coming on the Portland Water Bureau right now because of the, of the way their water system is set up.
And just from a constructibility standpoint, they have, you know, a couple of years worth of site work that they can do. So even if there are supply chain disruptions, and it takes an extra year, it's such a big project. They have time to accommodate that, where that's different on the smaller projects where which it's hitting us harder. But that is the other benefit. Stand Tech right now is partnered, they're one of the partners doing the design at Portland. So they intimately know the details, what we need to do to connect, which and they've learned there there's been the whole engineering has had to learn to redo things. Like, a lot of projects now are placing orders for these long lead items, such as MCCs or electrical components at thirty percent. And this has never been done before. In a normal project, you do the electrical right at the end. It's just. Yeah. The industry is just going through a large change right now. And but I mean, we're going to benefit from some of those procedures, too.
Well, thank you.
Mayor, I see Council.
Oh, yeah, Don.
Thanks. So I just wanted to say, first of all, I really appreciate the quality of the presentation and the report that I read through. I thought it was very informative and appreciate the amount of information you, Brian, you gave us in the short amount of time you're today. Carl's question about conservation is an interesting one, though, because what drives that gap that I pointed out in the previous graph is really those peak demands, which I'm assuming are hot day related, summertime. That's when we do have discretion, where, you know, we could shut off sprinklers and things like that as a city and and maybe lower that. So perhaps there's a little wiggle room if we don't quite make twenty twenty seven slash eight to squeeze by. But it won't won't take much beyond that for us to be in trouble. So I just point that out. And again, thanks again for your presentation.
All right. Well, thank you. A great presentation. Really appreciate all the work that went into it. And yeah, we'll go ahead and adjourn the work session. We'll have our city council meeting at seven o'clock. Thank you, Jenny. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Brian.
Jeff. Go ahead and call our city council meeting to order. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Welcome, everyone. Pre-usual, I'll start off with the review of tonight's agenda. I will call for any proposed changes tonight to tonight's agenda. We'll then go to public comment. There wasn't anybody that submitted online or have had in person, Jeff?
No, there was not, Mayor.
All right. We'll then go to a presentation from Clackamas County Public Health on the opioid settlement. We'll go to our consent agenda, which has our city council meeting minutes from our November twenty first meeting. Under old business, we have the second reading of the Bull Run Terrace reconsideration. Under new business, we have government relations priorities conversation with Nellie De Vries. Then we have Sandy Nat CBX residential IGA amendment conversation. We'll go to a report from Jordan Willer, our city manager. We'll round up our evening with our committee and council reports. And then at the end, our council does have an executive session. With that, Jeff, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Councilor Pizza here, Councilor Smallwood.
Here.
Councilor Sheldon.
Here.
Councilor Walker.
Here.
Councilor Exner.
Here.
Councilor Hokinson.
Here.
Here, Pauline.
Here. Is there any proposed changes to tonight's agenda? All right, seeing none and no submitted public comment, we'll move ahead to a presentation from Clackamas County Public Health on the opioid settlement.
Yes, thank you so much for having us tonight. Good evening. My name is April Heron. I am a program planner with Clackamas County Public Health Division. And I'll let my colleague Elizabeth introduce herself before we get started.
Right. I just wanted to make sure. Can everyone see the screen?
We can. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Hi, I'm Elizabeth White, and I'm actually from Clackamas County Children, Family, Community Connections Division. We worked with the Sandy Partners to stand up the Sandy Prevention Network Coalition. So we work on youth substance use prevention, along with other substance use prevention initiatives with public health. Thank you.
All right, Elizabeth, if you want to take us to the next slide, I'll just briefly review our agenda for the evening. So we're going to provide a brief update on the National Opioid Settlement Agreement. We'll provide an overview of the county's approach to spending our allocation dollars. And then we're really just hoping to be a resource to the city of Sandy for and answer any questions you may have about how you may want to spend your settlement allocation dollars. And with that, Elizabeth, I'll let you take it from here.
Um, hi. This is slide represents our commitment to lifting up communities. My colleague, Brian McCready's, and there he may have spoken with him in front of city council meetings before. Investment in of national opioid settlement funds and prevention, harm reduction, treatment, and recovery programs will help communities in Clackamas County impacted by opioid misuse. We have the opportunity to address the losses driven by the opioid crisis on individuals, families, public services, and others, and make wise investments informed by data. And I'm going to pass it on to April, who's going to provide some local and state data.
Alrighty, so first we'll start off with some background, and I'm sort of the impact of the opioid crisis has had on our country, state, and locally. So here you see some data that comes from the CDC, shows us that deaths from drug overdoses hit over a hundred thousand during the pandemic. This includes the number of deaths from April of twenty twenty through April of twenty twenty one. And it's the first time that drug overdose deaths have hit six figures in a twelve month period. Overall, the death toll jumped by more than twenty eight and a half percent compared to the same timeframe the year before. Deaths from synthetic opioids like fentanyl accounted for approximately sixty four percent of the total overdose deaths in that timeframe. And around three fourths of those, or seventy five thousand, were from all different types of opioids. So that would include prescription heroin and fentanyl. And this data shows us that there are now more overdose deaths from synthetic drugs like fentanyl than there were from overdose deaths from all drugs combined in twenty sixteen. And next slide. So looking at more recent statewide data on the left here, you can see that Oregon is among the states that saw the increase in all drug overdose deaths. This was a twenty six percent increase from March of twenty twenty one through March of twenty twenty two. And then additional data taken from the National Survey on Drug Use and Health, which is a self-reported survey done every two years, and was collected in twenty twenty, paints a pretty disappointing picture for Oregon. During that time, drug and alcohol addiction rates increased significantly. Oregon now ranks second in the country for all different types of substance use disorders. Meanwhile, Oregon ranks fiftieth in access to treatment, making it very difficult for people who want help to actually access that help. And Oregon now ranks first in both prescription opioid misuse and methamphetamine use. And next slide. So public health staff maintain a data dashboard that includes key indicators of opioid harms. These primarily include overdose deaths that come from our medical examiner, emergency department visits from our hospitals, EMS transports for overdose incidents, and then the rate of prescriptions that are being written for opioids in our county. So all of these data can be used to help identify populations and areas of the county that have been most impacted by the crisis. And it can also help us understand where our funding investments should be made. And next slide. So now we'll take a look at some of this local level data that's part of this dashboard that I just talked about. So here you see that we are continuing to see these increasing rates of overdose in Clackamas County. Drug induced death that comes from our vital statistics shows that we had eighty six confirmed deaths in twenty twenty one. Those numbers were just recently finalized. They can take several months to get them from a pending to a confirmed status. The eighty six is the highest that our county has ever seen, and it's an eighty seven percent increase from twenty nineteen, when drug related deaths were much lower. Looking ahead at twenty twenty two, we have pending deaths that go all the way back to June still. But we can tell that based on what our toxicology reports are showing us that twenty twenty two will outpace twenty twenty one. And we're seeing that fentanyl is the most common drug appearing in the reports of those who have died from a drug overdose. Followed by fentanyl, we see methamphetamine occurring most frequently, and often in combination with fentanyl. And next slide. So here we'll look at the number of yearly drug related fatalities that are drug broken down by drug type. The presence of all different types of opioids, including prescription heroin and fentanyl, that were found in the results of people who died from substance use increased one hundred and sixty two percent from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty one. So on this slide that you can see, we've had some changing trends over the last couple of years. I'm looking at those top two purple lines. We see the deaths related to fentanyl were more than four times higher in twenty twenty one than twenty nineteen, while those from meth increased by seventy two percent. We do have a little bit of good news, though, looking at those two bottom blue lines, we see the deaths from heroin and prescription opioids mirror what we're seeing nationally. So they have started to increase since twenty twenty. And next slide. So here you can see that these are drug related deaths by location of death or zip code in Clackamas County. You can see the zip code for Sandy saw a death rate of one point three percent. And this data is a little bit older. It's from twenty fifteen through twenty twenty. And just to give you where Sandy fits into the bigger picture, the range of deaths in any one zip code ranges from a high of twelve point four percent. I think that's up in the North Clackamas area to a low of point three percent. And that's outgoing towards the government camp area. So Sandy is towards the lower end of of those percentages. And then if you want to go to the next slide, Elizabeth. We here are looking at incidents that required EMS transport for opioid related calls, those that came through for drug overdose, or events where naloxone was administered. And they're listed by drug type on the left and by city on the right. These incidents have increased significantly over the last year compared to twenty twenty. And you can see where Sandy ranks there in drug related nine one one calls. This is from January through November twenty sixth of this year. And this data comes from a system that public health just recently subscribed to earlier this year called First Watch. It is real time surveillance data, and it's been really helpful for us. We are able to look at these calls on a weekly basis and kind of look at trends and and share information as needed with our partners. But we did have for Sandy thirteen calls that met the case definition in that timeframe. And the majority of those calls included fentanyl, oxycodone, methamphetamine, and heroin. And then if you want to go to the next slide, I'll just wrap up here before I pass it over to Elizabeth. A little bit of background on the settlement agreement that you may or may not be familiar with. Total amount coming to Oregon is three hundred and thirty three million dollars. That's part of the Johnson and Johnson and distributor settlements. The Purdue Pharma settlement is still pending. However, two of the largest US pharmacy chains, both CVS and Walgreens, were recently ordered to pay five billion dollars each to address the toll of the opioid epidemic. So the state will receive about forty five percent of the settlement, and fifty five percent of that will be distributed to the cities and the counties who signed on to the agreement. Defendants will have up to eighteen years to complete those payments. And I believe most of us has started to receive our second allocations here in Clackamas County. Hopefully Sandy has as well. As a county, we're receiving approximately thirteen point seven million dollars. And then the cities will receive lesser amounts, and those are calculated based on population size and a series of very complicated public health metrics that I'm happy to share with you if you're interested. We have been told that these payments will likely be front loaded in the first two to three years. And allocation decisions about those dollars can be made locally, which is one of the reasons that Elizabeth and I are here to be a resource to you. One other thing is that there will be annual reporting requirements at both the county and city levels. And Elizabeth, I'll go ahead and back over to you.
Um, thank you. I'm going to discuss the allowable uses of settlement funding. The settlements with Johnson and Johnson and three opioid distributors outline nine core abatement strategies. Those are listed on the slide here to address the opioid crisis. And you should have received copy of Exhibit E of the National Agreement, which describes these strategies in detail. We don't have time to go through all of them. But we could tell you this settlement encourage investment in projects that are part of these nine evidence-based strategies. And many of these strategies are being carried out in Clackamas County, such as warm handoff programs that connect people to recovery supports, naloxone distribution, naloxone is the overdose reversal drug, and programs that prevent youth substance use. We also work to coordinate efforts with community partners and meet regularly with stakeholders to discuss how to maximize collective impact with available resources in forums such as the Clackamas Community Alliance, Clackamas County Prevention Coalition, and local groups such as the Sandy Prevention Network. We don't have to share, we don't have time to share all the great work that is happening. There are solutions being implemented across the county and in cities. And with all these great steps forward we have made together, unfortunately, critical gaps remain, and there is a lack of capacity to meet demands for services. Opioid settlement dollars could enhance or expand many of these services and provide sustainable funding source to strengthen current investments. The next slide is on guiding principles. Johns Hopkins Bloomberg School of Public Health developed a national model to provide guidance to jurisdictions for the use of funds from the opioid location. The model includes the five core principles, which are listed on the screen, that align with the best practices. We are using this evidence-based model to guide planning and implementation to avoid reinventing the wheel and ensure dollars are used most effectively. I'm going to go through each one of these quickly. Spend money to save lives, i.e. supplement, not supplant jurisdictions are required to use funds to supplement or initiate new programs rather than replace existing spending. Funds should be used to address the toll substance use has taken on our community and promote solutions that increase each community's capacity to address the crisis. Then using evidence to go to guide spending. Jurisdictions should fund initiatives proven to work and not, again, reinvent the wheel. Researchers and clinicians have built substantial body of evidence to demonstrate effective interventions. For example, there are life evidence-based programs like Life Skills, a program that teaches drug awareness, self-management, and resistance skills, and has proven to reduce opioid misuse among middle and high school students, which leads to investment in youth prevention. They say, you know, more than an ounce of prevention, but we need a more than an ounce of prevention to make a measurable impact on opioid and other drug crisis. A comprehensive effort to reduce the toll of substance use needs additional investment in youth primary prevention programs. Substance use by youth often persists into adulthood. In fact, approximately fifty percent of all people with substance use disorders start their substances before age fourteen, the age of my son, which is scary. Every one dollar invested in evidence-based substance use prevention programs results in a savings of between two and twenty dollars. So it's a cost effective intervention. The next piece is focusing on racial equity. Lifting up communities disproportionately impacted by the opioid crisis is is one of the key components of this model. Historical patterns of discrimination need to be addressed, and funding focused on programs that will tackle the root causes of health disparities. And in the justice of all populations, addressing stigma, and involving committee members in the solutions. Lastly, developing a fair and transparent process. Accountability, I believe, is achieved through transparency. The planning process should be guided by subject matter experts with active engagement by people and families with lived experience and other groups. Steps to advance this process include using data to identify ways to maximize investments, gathering input from different groups touched by the opioid epidemic, and making sure there is representation reflecting the diversity of communities affected when allocating funds. So we're going to talk about how we are implementing this process in Clackamas County. This slide captures the framework we're using for planning and implementation. The framework aligns with those five principles that we just went through and uses a committee, community-driven data. The framework aligns with those five principles that we just went through and uses a committee, community-driven, data-informed collaborative approach to spend money to save lives. The first component is evidence. You see that little chart. We are identifying evidence-based investments through assessment and community engagement. So this fall, we held listening sessions with stakeholders that provide services and supports to people affected by substance use. And during these sessions, we asked participants to identify service delivery gaps and priorities for settlement funding. A detailed report capturing participant feedback is actually complete. And we're now working to distill this information into a more user-friendly format to share with community partners. The next step is to convene listening sessions to lift up the voices of those directly impacted by substance use. We are striving to advance equity through this assessment process by identifying populations disproportionately impacted by substance use and examining specific barriers. We also review county-level findings from a statewide assessment and plan to combine all the assessment information together into a summary report to inform decision-making. And you see collaboration is in the middle. I kind of think of it as a sandwich with collaboration as the cheese. It's the most important driver of this process and included in all aspects of this framework. While we continue to engage communities, including city partners such as yourself, to identify funding priorities, we plan to convene a stakeholder group to guide the process for distribution of settlement funds. And collaboration is also the key to transparency. Transparency is embedded in this framework to build public trust in the process. This includes annual reporting and on investments and lives saved. So here we are in front of the City of Sandy. Thanks again for inviting us to join you today. We're offering support. April provided some great data. We will share the assessment findings. We'll meet with you to share some evidence-based practices. If you would like to have more information, we're offering our partnership to maximize those investments. And some cities have expressed interest in collaborative investments through an agreement between the city and county. We are just offering whatever kind of support you would like to see in your communities uh around opioid settlement funds, and we're here to answer questions. And we are done. Thank you very much.
Thank you for that presentation. Um, I guess, Jordan, I would just kick it to you. I mean, as far as our capacity and services at the city, I mean, are we really set up to, you know, adequately kind of accept these funds and push forward with these kinds of programs? Or I know we have a brand-new county services, you know, facility here in our community. Is there ways for collaborating with the county that's interacting with with our folks here? What's some of your thoughts on?
Um, sure, you know, I think so Chief and I have had some conversation about this and and some of the allowable uses. A lot of cities, even, you know, our size and smaller elected to receive the funds. Partly because we do have expenses related to the prices and Narcan is actually pretty expensive. And so Chief and I have talked about that, even as something simple as equipment, supplies, training on delivering those drugs to keep, you know, folks alive. It's pretty important. I think this is probably similar to a lot of city situation of why they elected to receive it. It is good to hear, you know, the process that Clackamas County is going through because, you know, if the council's interested, you know, there is partnership opportunities. Some of the cities, I think a few in Oregon did elect to give them to the counties because they are the public health agencies. Overall, it's not a large amount for us. I think it's probably ten thousand dollars over uh the life of the settlement. I think we've received the first payment was forty-six hundred. Yeah, so not a lot. And I think, how much did we spend recently? Few thousand? Yeah.
Also expires. So we don't have a lot of funds, and it sounds like the stuff we need is pretty expensive, and we'll take up the bulk of the funds that we we have.
Yeah, but I in perhaps you know, April or Elizabeth have, you know, they've done presentations for other cities, I imagine, and maybe they could share some of those ideas with us too. And how other cities are spending those funds.
I'd love to hear some of that, April, and then we'll shoot it over to you, Carl. I see your hand up.
Yeah, I just wanted to um respond to the comment about naloxone and um let folks know that we, as a county, are receiving um some dollars through a very generous donation from Care Oregon to purchase naloxone. And this is a supply that we can absolutely pass along to our law enforcement agency. So I just want to put that out there as a resource. Please don't spend your own dollars because it is very expensive, and that's something that we'd be happy to help you with. And that's just one one example.
And April, did you want to talk about the cities who have decided to, you know, do an intergovernmental agreement with the cities around the settlement allocations?
Sure. So we we haven't gotten as far as details of what that scope of work looks like. This is a very new intergovernmental agreement between um we facilitate those intergovernmental agreements and the funding passed along to our finance department at the county level to ultimately distribute those fundings when those decisions are being made, being made. But we are currently working on what the scope of work looks like. It'll be a pretty basic template that will include similar language involved in the national settlement agreements, and then it can, we can have minor tweaks depending on what the cities would like to see, and we can make it a little bit more, you know, catered to the cities as much as possible. And then I know that there are a few hands up for questions. We're happy to to take those.
Carl, one sec. Lori's going to jump in with a quick question for April, and then we'll go to you.
Yeah. So so April, as far as the the funds for the Narcan, are you you said that the county is going to have money for Narcan distribution through for local law enforcement. Is that going to last six months, a year, two years, three years? What's the what's the longevity of that?
We know that we, the funding should definitely last through the next year. Um, I do know that OHA is um convening what they're calling the Prevention Treatment Recovery Board. It was mandated by legislation to decide how the state portion of the dollars will be spent. And I do know that they're looking. There's a lot of support to fund what they're calling a harm reduction clearinghouse that would make naloxone available across the state. Um, there is a clearinghouse available right now, but it's running really short on dollars, and it has not unfortunately been accessible by law enforcement until just recently. So for now, the City of Sandy Police Department could place an order through that clearinghouse, procure a supply, and then, you know, when that runs out or expires, or you need replacement doses, you could then make your request to public health for future doses. So I could safely say for the next year, and it's looking like there's a lot of support for a consistent supply beyond that.
Thanks.
Great. Thank you. Uh, Carl.
Wow. Being a little bit sick, I'm going to modify my anger here. I am. I really don't see any of the things that this presentation is directed at helping uh some of the people that are really on the ground. I have a nephew that's sitting about fifty feet from me who's a black man. And he has been trying since uh early October, living here in my house, trying to find medical, trying to find counseling, trying to find ways to be able to pull out of the opioid and his mix of drugs is such a cocktail that I don't even know. I know all the reasons and all of the pieces of it. And it has been so frustrating for us. Of course, through a little bit of COVID, this last three weeks or so has really been a stoppage on what's going on here. But my nephew is just frustrated, just totally overwhelmed about being able to help, and my wife and I trying to help him to be able to come up with a solution, to be able to find ways for him to be able to pull out of this thing. And I don't dare, and he doesn't dare, leave this house with a fear that at any moment he will find his way, and he knows how to get into the drugs again. And the only reason why he's been drug-free for the last three, couple, three months is because of some physical issues. He's had a terrible accident caused by drug overdose. And it just seems to me that we know an awful lot about the statistics, but we don't seem to know an awful lot about how to reach out to these people who really do need to be helped and the right kind of help. And my goodness, ten thousand dollars to a city of Sandy that has, I don't know how many minorities, but I do know that drug and alcohol issues are are fairly significant in our community. Almost seems like you have all the money up on top, but it never really raises, runs down to the bottom. So I'm pretty frustrated that uh this is, it sounded like a great plan. It's got thousands and thousands of strategies and mixed in it. I read through the plan, and I thought I don't see how you'll ever be able to accomplish them all. But certainly, when it comes to an individual, and my nephew is that individual for me who just cannot find a way. And I'm I'm pretty frustrated by this whole process and knowing that people have friends and relatives and loved ones who are involved in all this, we can't seem to reach them. And then finally, I didn't hear anything about the true causes. How did these people get to be from eighty-six percent from two years ago of increased opioid? What what's the problem? What's the situation for that? How did that ever happen? And that's pretty drastic, and that's pretty short period of time. So, you know, you got a great plan for taking care of what you think you have now, but I wonder if we really even got a handle on what is the cause of all these things? If you want to sit down and talk with me, I could surely tell you the cause for my nephew, and it may be a very odd, very different than the world's average, but it just seems like we haven't got it together yet, and ten thousand dollars.
Yeah, Counselor, if you'd like to meet with me and some members of the Sandy Coalition to talk, talk about, you know, because we, you know, are addressing local conditions, welcome to I will convene a conversation if you want to kind of more locally focused.
Absolutely. I I'm desperate for my nephew. I need to do something. He's going to be, you know, I don't know what he's going to be. Where he's going to go. Have no options at this point.
Can I ask how old he is?
Thirty-five.
Okay, um, I will connect with you afterwards if you'd like to send me your email. Um, one example of a program that you saw listed on the slide that Elizabeth presented is what we call a worm handoff program. We have a program operating in Clackamas County called Project Hope. I founded the program about four years ago with a community paramedic friend of mine from Clackamas Fire District. But we have been operating off of minimal grant support in in-kind time for the last four years and not able to expand countywide. But we are here to help people who are suffering from a substance use disorder and at risk of overdose, and I'm happy to take him as a referral and pass his information off onto our team if that's something that you'd be interested in. But that's just one example of a program that we're looking to expand across the county, but with minimal dollars and, you know, applying for these grants that run out within a year or two. It's been extremely difficult. So we're hopeful that
Have you planned to solve the problem then? I mean, this looks like a very you're chasing the lion's tail, and you can't keep up with it. And that character is not there whacking people left and right, and they're going to death. And we're chasing the tail. In my email. I don't want to take up the rest of the evening, but you can, I just want you to make sure you hear my frustration, my anger, and my desperation for my nephew.
Yeah. No, I hear you. It's just not enough. I mean, you've already lifted it up. It's not enough money to be able to accomplish what we're we're trying to achieve. But I also wanted to address the thing that you were talking about, like stemming the root causes. So, you know, part of the local coalition work is, you know, decreasing risk factors and increasing protective factors for youth so that they don't, you know, fall into a drug dependence. So that's part of the puzzle. But you're right, there's just not enough funds to to do this, and it's very frustrating.
And one last thing before I know, there's another question. We'd love to invite you to attend that that future listening session that we mentioned. That will include voices of lived experience and those who have been most affected by this crisis. I think you have a lot of valid points and information to share, and so when I connect with you, I'll make sure that you are given information about the date of that last listening session.
Uh, Jeff, I can't see anything. So leave a a chat note here. Otherwise, I put my email on the chat. I don't see it showing up. Maybe there's a button that I'm not seeing yet. Otherwise, you can just look on my website and get my email.
We'll get we'll get Jeff to send it around to everybody afterwards. All right, Don, I see your hand up, but Kathleen's ahead of you in the queue, and then we'll go to you, Don.
Um, I I have a couple of questions. One's an easy one. Is that naloxone, does that treat meth and fentanyl? Lori's saying no, just opioids.
So that's fentanyl, heroin, oxy.
Yeah, okay. Um, and then, so that's probably why we've seen the big increase. Okay. But my question also is like, of this thirteen point seven million coming to Clackamas County, is some of that going to go to our new wonderful um local uh health center here in Sandy? That's one question. The second question is how I mean, ten thousand dollars is hardly worth even doing an MOU. And, you know, by the time you cover all your overhead for doing a grant or something, it's hardly anything. And how did we get so little money? I mean, is it because the state's taken forty-five percent? And that's the third question is, what's the state using the other forty-five percent for? Because, you know, is that is that also money that they're going to be giving out that make make it available or just kind of wondering where where most of money's going if if the counties are the ones and the cities are the ones that are actually out there delivering the services.
Yeah, those are great questions. So um the legislation I mentioned that uh convened this Prevention Treatment Recovery Board, they're in the process of figuring out how those dollars will be spent. There are representatives from across the state on that uh steering committee that are making those decisions. And I know that they just started to meet a few months ago. We do have one Clackamas County representative on that board. Our jail captain is representing law enforcement, so we do have at least one county person at the table. But I don't anticipate that they will have those decisions made probably for at least a couple of months, maybe longer. And as Elizabeth outlined in that sort of that framework slide, we're going through a similar process where we're making assessments, we're gathering information, we want to hear from the community. Counselor Exner made some excellent comments, and we want to make sure that as decisions are made, we're hearing from people who have really important information to share back, as well as our treatment providers, our schools. We've invited many different disciplines to the table. So we don't want to spend these dollars without engaging our community and hearing from all of the different voices. And then I am so sorry, I forgot what your last question was.
I think she was wondering like how the county, you know, was giving the money to the cities and what you saw on that pie chart, you know, that that's the allocation for the city. So there's that thirteen point seven, and then of that, there's a fraction that goes to the cities, and then then it's split across the different cities. So that's the only thing that like is allocated for the city of Sandy is that is that slice within the slice within the slice.
Yeah, I guess my concern is just, you know, a mile wide and an inch deep. And when we try to divide it up into so many things, it becomes, you know, ten thousand dollars is not really anything that you can do anything about. And I don't know, you know, whether this is enough for the county to do something about it or or what, but that that would be my concern is I'd rather see it go to, you know, a few entities that can actually make progress than have it divvied up so finely and pointless.
Yeah, some cities are considering just, or you know, like having the county like take that ten thousand to like do this kind of collective impact model. So however your city would like to move forward.
Go on.
Thanks. I want to echo what Carl said, you know, personally have been impacted quite a bit by the opioid crisis and and my family and and those who've I've had guardianship of and so forth. The um the challenge that I've found in working with addicts and so forth in my various hats that I've worn in my life has been that these few services that are available are either in Portland, which we're out of county for, or are in Oregon City, which geographically might as well be on the on the coast. And I also heard somebody state that, you know, the county really, you own the the public health. This is your problem, not really our city problem. I mean, we have our problems too. But when you show those statistics of nine-seven-oh-five-five, only a portion of that geography is actually the city of Sandy. A lot of it is county land. We need county services located here in Sandy. And I think that's what Kathleen, Counselor Walker, was getting to is we've got the new facility. We need money and people and resources here if we're going to at all make a difference in this down the road. And so that would be my big ask, and I've asked it from every county person who comes here because I keep pointing out that geography. I think we're forgotten. I think the fact that ten thousand dollars got thrown at us is evidence of how forgotten Sandy is. And so it's it's time to remember that there's a big part of the county out here that we need to, we need some some help. Thanks.
Yeah, I hear you, and I reassure you that we absolutely feel your pain with these small allocations that are going to the cities. Yeah, I hear you. And I reassure you that we absolutely feel your pain with these small allocations that are going to the cities. This formula, I am happy to share that with, with the council, it was developed on a national level. We had absolutely nothing to do with that. Um, and I don't agree with how those numbers were calculated at all. It's very complex. I, so complex, I can't even really explain it. You, you'll have to read through it yourself.
Go, going, you know, the real issue isn't ten thousand, should it be fifteen or twenty? The real issue that I really hope you take away from this comment is that we need more services located in Sandy County, services in Sandy. If we're going to make this work, we, there's no buses that go direct to Oregon City. There's no way to send people there and that's the hardship.
Absolutely. Yeah, our same sessions, we, um, we're starting to, you know, like, we said that we were going to share that information from the listening sessions. And that was one of the biggest, you know, takeaways was transportation, right? You say, and, and then the barriers faced by rural communities. So that's like loud and clear, you know, that from our listening sessions that came, that came forward. So, um, hopefully we can lift that up when we present, you know, these findings to the county commissioners.
Well, thank you for the presentation and the conversation. That was awesome. Um, from what I'm taking away from us as a group is, is ten thousand and it's, uh, not a ton of money. Uh, probably better, uh, in a wider net effort, uh, the county's doing, but hoping that we're wanting that, that those services happening here in Sandy, if there may be this county health services building that.
With the exception of, I, I would like to see the police budget offset, if we can offset their purchase of Narcan, because they are all carrying.
Yeah, and the chief just told me that he did submit for reimbursement through, um.
Okay.
What is it that? We are.
Because the price is going up.
It is.
Yeah, it used to be cheap a couple of years ago, it cost.
Well, and then what about our, what about our employees outside of the police department, right? I mean, you have your, your parks employees or parks, they come across these, right? The exposure to, uh, opioids doesn't just have to be to a police officer. Um, and so I, I mean, while I, while I really like the idea of giving it back and, and I'm not saying like a portion of that, I also see a value in making sure even from a harm reduction standpoint outside of work, um, that our other employees are, are trained and equipped to, to act appropriately as well. And if, if that grant covers that, great. If not, then perhaps that's a mechanism, this is a mechanism to support that.
If you'd like to give me a contact person and let me know the quantity that you'd like for your city employees, I'm happy to include that in our planning and when we get those doses later this year or early twenty twenty-three, I will let you know.
Great.
Jeremy, in, in this whole, uh, process, is there any funding for school districts? And I just worry about our vulnerable population and, uh, making sure that they have the Narcan there when they have instances of these minors that are needed. It's great that, Rich, I agree with you, other places should have this. But what about, you know, community as well, you know? Uh, and not just ours, other cities around Clackamas County as well. I know ten thousand isn't much to go around. It's more of a question is, um, with the lawsuit that happened and the money coming in, has some of these been allocated to those high schools and middle schools to be able to, um, save those lives?
All right.
The answer to that.
All right.
Okay, was there no, I, I mean, that was a question. I didn't know if there was.
I can speak to that a, a little bit. So, so again, these dollars, we haven't landed on any allocations. But what we didn't talk about tonight, because I wasn't sure how much, um, time we had to go into this, but was the measure one-ten investments and those dollars have been awarded to seventeen organizations in the county. Um, and I will say, um, that we're doing some pretty great work in collaboration with Ant Farm that's out there in Sandy. Um, also in Estacada, um, they are really getting on board with some of the harm reduction work and sort of leading the way with some of those efforts. And we just met with them last week and they are absolutely willing to be a, um, naloxone access point for the community. Um, that's one example. Um, I know they're very much connected to youth, at-risk youth, vulnerable populations. Um, but so far that's been our main connection point in Sandy for this work.
Well, thank you so much. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving ahead in our agenda to our consent agenda. Uh, we have our city council meeting minutes from our November twenty-first meeting. Unless there's a discussion, entertain a motion. Motion that we accept the consent agenda. There's seconds, there's a motion by Counselor Sheldon, a second by Counselor Smallwood to adopt our consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye or give me a thumbs up. I oppose nays or a thumbs down. Motion carries. All right, moving ahead to old business. All right, hearing and record, uh, I know, um, in the Bull Run Terrace land use, um, hearing. As the hearing and the record in this matter is closed this evening, council will receive any updates or comments from staff, conduct the second reading of ordinance twenty-two dash twenty-seven, deliberate and make a decision regarding this application. I will now call on any ex parte contacts since the close of the hearing on November twenty-first, including any site visits. All right. Um, all right, any comments or updates from staff? Kelly?
Um, no updates for, from me, mayor, in case you have any questions, that's fine, I'm here.
All right, I now open, uh, for any questions for staff from council. All right, we're now in, uh, to discussion. Or I can just actually, I'm going to call on the, uh, I'm going to call for Jeff to give us the second reading of ordinance twenty-two dash twenty-seven.
Hey, mayor, this is ordinance twenty-two dash twenty-seven. An ordinance amending the city of Sandy comprehensive plan map by changing the comprehensive plan designation for one point seven five five acres and changing the zoning map designation for fifteen point nine one acres, thirteen point six eight net acres, and adopting the Bull Run Terrace specific area plan.
Okay, I think we all went through and made a lot of comments on our feelings and stuff, um, a couple of weeks ago. Um, I'm comfortable unless anybody else has any more to discuss.
I'll move, uh, we approve the second reading, uh, reading of ordinance number two thousand twenty-two dash twenty-seven.
I'll second.
There's a motion by Counselor Pete Sol and a second by Counselor Exner to approve the second reading, reading of ordinance twenty-two dash twenty-seven. Um, all those in favor signify by saying aye or give me a thumbs up. I oppose nays or a thumbs down.
Nay.
All right, motion carries.
Right, and then mayor, we need a separate motion for the land use approval.
That's right. Is that the number twenty-two dash zero three eight?
That's correct.
Is it, it's, yeah, you're approving the subdivision and, and tree request basically.
And is that the second reading as well or is that the first?
It's just a separate motion for the.
It's a separate motion in general.
And adopting the findings and conditions of the staff report.
I make a motion that we approve, uh, file number twenty-two dash zero three eight. And what was the second part of that? And adopt the final.
The, adopt the findings and conditions in the staff report.
Is there a second? There's a motion by Counselor Pete Sol and a second by Counselor Smallwood. Um, all those in favor signify by saying aye or give me a thumbs up. I oppose nays or a thumbs down.
Nay.
Motion carries. All right. Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you, council.
Moving ahead to new business, welcome Nellie. Government relations priorities.
Thanks, Kelly.
Yes, uh, Jordan, do you want to introduce?
Yeah, I'm going to introduce Nellie DeVries. Um, we've been engaged with her for this upcoming legislative session. Um, we're excited to have her on board and helping out. Um, had the, the privilege to already tour the, the city a little bit with her and show her our wonderful wastewater treatment plant.
Which, which I was going to, I was going to put this in my council report, is a lot more rosier, rosy today than it was the last time we were all out there. It looks really good.
Yeah, um, and then we also, uh, had a chance to go out to three sixty-second and Bell Street and some of the opportunities there and, uh, some other sites around town, uh, kind of give her the lay of the land. Uh, the council had a work session a couple of months ago about legislative priorities as we head into this upcoming session. Cities ha- has a track record, record of, um, some great success over the last few years, uh, thanks to the advocacy of the city council and the mayor. Um, and we're looking to continue to build upon that. Um, I think it was fitting that, uh, Nellie was here tonight to hear about our, uh, water master plan. Um, and the cost of that project and how important that priority is for us. Um, because I think that, uh, has, um, kind of pos- positioned itself as the priority for us as we head into the session, seek funding. Um, and so ask Nellie to co- come tonight, um, to introduce herself first of all, um, and then talk a little bit about what to expect here in the legislative session, engaging with our new representatives, um, uh, following the redistricting and some of the, um, elections that occurred last month. Um, and then, uh, you know, anything that she can, can offer in terms of gossip or news, um, as we hadn't kind of the unknown with, uh, a lot of changes, um, with, uh, uh, the, the Oregon legislature. So, Nellie.
Oh, thank you, Jordan. Thank you. Thank you so much for having me this evening. Um, I have a very informal presentation, but I just wanted to tell you a little bit about myself. I've been in the legislative process in one capacity or another since two thousand and six. And, um, you know, I really started lobbying right after law school was, I decided that the legal route was not necessarily the route that I would like to go. So I continued lobbying. Um, and so I've had my own business. I've been in-house. I've worked as a staffer. I've done a little bit of everything and a little bit of every issue. Um, part of my passion is kind of doing a lot of, uh, little things. Like, you know, I've done healthcare in the Netherlands and I mean, like a whole skew of wild rides. And so, you know, obviously touring a wastewater management plant was a highlight of mine.
Yeah, right there with the Netherlands.
Right up there. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Um, but no, I, I've always loved the city of Sandy, so I'm really excited to be working with you all. And, you know, I've got a very strong city manager and government affairs team, so I feel fortunate to be working with them. Um, in terms of the twenty twenty-three legislative session, I've kind of given up predicting exactly what's going to happen after twenty twenty. Because, you know, twenty twenty, if you remember, the legislators walked out, the Republicans walked out. So, I mean, we had a couple of days of legislature and then it was a short session and then we were all at home. And then we had two years at home, um, which has proved very difficult. And it's really mind boggling to me that we have elected officials that are getting, that have been re-elected, that have never been in the building with lobbyists. So that to me is mind boggling. Uh, so it's, it's kind of an interesting navigation right now to try to get to know the existing legislators, as you know, you've got Representative Heath and, um, uh, Daniel Bonham, Senator Bonham now, uh, with your new districts. And so I think both of them will be great advocates for you. We do have some challenges just with health-wise and their families and whatnot that we're kind of going to have to navigate. Um, not to mention that you're, there are two Republicans in, uh, Democratic legislature, which is also another interesting, um, angle to navigate, but it's not impossible. It's exciting because about fifty percent of the legislators will be new. So that is an opportunity for the city of Sandy to really paint their own picture. And, you know, there are pluses and minuses. And then you also now have Lori Chavez-Dremer, um, as your congressperson, which is exciting and, and also she will be in the majority, which is good. Um, but she will also be a freshman or is a freshman, I guess I should say. And so, you know, there are just a lot of things to navigate, but it's not impossible. And I think there are, are a lot of opportunities. Um, from my perspective, just for the last month, from what I've learned, besides a lot more about wastewater management than I thought I'd ever know, um, is, uh, you know, just really kind of narrowing down on exactly what city council would like achieve during the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, excuse me, legislative session. And it sounds like it's really the water treatment facility that's your number one priority right now. And so to the extent that I can work with your esteemed staff and whatnot and just kind of really narrow down on the policy issues to make that ask and then we can get that before legislators. But, I mean, we really need to have a firm definitive ask and I don't think we're necessarily, I think we're close now.
We're pretty close. I, um, we've been, we've been discussing this internally in terms of the water project and, um, pivoting from wastewater, which is still a priority, you know, that's a very expensive project. Um, we can definitely use some more grant funding to keep those, those rates, you know, at, at the rate increases as low as possible. Uh, but you, you heard some of the challenges that Jenny outlined in terms of the water funding, not as much, um, you know, in terms of SRF funding. We don't have WIFIA yet. Um, you know, we, we don't really have any other sources of funding locked down for water as opposed to wastewater. We have SRFs, we have WIFIA. It's fully funded. It's just a matter of increasing the rates to, to meet that debt service. Um, on water, also, um, with the water master plan now, we have a pretty clear path in terms of our CIP. And so our, our first ask, I think, coming out of the gate now will be, you know, not as sexy as construction, but we need all that design, engineering permitting, land acquisition for the transmission pipeline, um, and also to start designing the rebuild, remodel upgrades to Alder Creek. Um, and that puts us back to kind of what we got last year. I mean, it's a fourteen, fifteen million dollar ask. If we were able to get, uh, those projects funded for this first, you know, planning and engineering permitting. Um, and that would really carry us so that we can then lock into the SRF or the WIFIA or the revenue bonds, whatever we need to do, uh, supply the funding for the construction. So that's our big kind of Christmas Santa, we, you know, love, uh, a hundred millions of dollars to help us, uh, with this, uh, essential project. One, thinking of it, the other thing that has come up in our conversations with, with Nellie and with the mayor and some, some others on council is the bypass project. Uh, if you remember, we did the bypass feasibility project, the next kind of hurdle with that project is engaging with our, you know, their government agencies, ODOT, Clackamas County, garnering support for that, um, in terms of the next stages and exploring the feasibility, but also, you know, environmental studies and, and some of the major things that we need to do to actually keep advancing this, uh, massive project.
Cause that's more of a staff to staff level deal, right? I mean, like one, we're talking about going with the legislature, going to our elected officials, asking for a, a large line item that we need funded. But the others more dot in our i's, cross in our t's, getting it adopted into the county's transportation systems plan and all those kinds of things, right? I mean, it's a lot less, feels like a lot less of a policy push, I guess is what I.
Well, it, it is at the staff level in terms of, you know, the technical, like you need it in your TSB, we need an RTSB. Here's the feasibility study, why we think this is important. You know, the county commission is going to have similar questions to the council, right? You know, and how's it impact rule, you know, on corporate Clackamas County? How's it impact businesses? Uh, you know, they're going to have those same kind of questions. And so it is at the end of the day a policy question for them too. Right, they want to support something like this. That could be, you know, they want to see the cost benefit of that in terms of Clackamas County. So, um, you know, I think Nellie could probably help with her connections to Clackamas County and how we navigate that and kind of keep advancing that project as a priority for the city. So I think we're, we are getting to the point where we're narrowing this down. We're, you know, Jeff and I will work with Nellie at developing one pagers that we can hand out, kind of get in front of our new representatives. We've talked about next steps being, uh, scheduling meetings with Senator Bonham and Representative Heath and, um, bringing them out to Sandy and doing similar tours so they get familiar with our needs, um, and our wants. Um, which I think would be helpful, uh, especially, you know, given the newness and stuff to kind of come in early. Um, and get them with Sandy in the front of their mind as they, they go in. So what is the schedule now? Is it January seventeenth?
January seventeenth is the first day of, the official first day of session, but we actually get one in on the ninth and that's when all the bills will drop. So my plan would be to, I see my CM three, I don't know if you're familiar with that bill tracking software, but I, I will pull the bills and then probably work with Jordan and Jeff as necessary. And then they can transfer whatever information to you all as they see necessary. Um, but at least we will have a week generally since we went to annual sessions, we've been starting on February first for the last decade. Um, but our newest speaker and, um, Senate president decided that they would like to start earlier, so we're going to be.
They're new, it's ambitious, you know?
I, I just, I'm just glad, I'm just glad we get the bills a week early. There's something, I mean, back before we went to annual sessions, we get the bills the first day of session and then you're scrambling and there's hearings being held and you haven't even read all three thousand bills yet. So at least we'll have that week. So that's good. So January ninth, be on the lookout for an email from me. And we'll go from there. But, um, they're saying that there, I'm, I'm saying the facilities director is saying that we will be allowed in the Capitol Building this year for the first time in almost three years now. Um, but they are doing the seismic. But they are doing the seismic upgrades of the Capitol Building. So the wings where all the hearing rooms are will be open, open. So we'll be able to testify in person. The thing that the facilities director has not figured out is a lot of lobbyists will hang out outside of the House chamber floor to pull people off the floor. That's going to be closed. So they're trying to find a place for all of us to mull around and still be able to pass notes into legislators to get them to come off the floor. So that's going to be, it's it's going to be a transition. And I think it's just going to be, we fill it out the first week, kind of see how things are going. And I think, I think things will probably change too after the first week when we realize what's working and what isn't working. So we're just going to have to, we're just going to have to flow with it. And, you know, priorities are obviously going to be the the usual suspects. You've got homelessness and, you know, financing stuff where we're possibly, we're entering a soft recession, so they call it. And so we have to see just how soft that recession turns out to be when we get the next revenue forecast. But things aren't necessarily bleak at this point, at least at this juncture. Ask me in a month and I'll let you know. But it's, it's going to be an interest, it's going to be kind of, kind of like a hybrid transition like we're in here, where we all kind of learn the new normal and figure out what's happening.
And then we have City Day at the Capitol too is is coming up. Which I think registration is open for the January twenty fifth. Yeah, registration closes on it. Not till the nineteenth.
Yeah, I pulled up the legal Oregon cities. I mean, they'll be a great ally to have, as will the county. And I've worked with the county, you know, it's, yeah, tech dev director and then also their government affairs team a lot. So I think getting on their radar, because when I was talking to their government affairs person, he was like, oh, my gosh, you need to connect me with Sandy because I've never worked with them before. So I think there, we have some good allies that can definitely help be advocates for us as well as me. So I'm excited. This is, there's a lot of good opportunity and it's a thriving, Sandy's a thriving city. And I mean, you're going to have an ice rink here before you know it.
That's right. That's right.
Oh, I see. You've already talked to Stan.
I sent her an email.
Yeah, so it should be, it it should be, I mean, it's not, I'm not saying it's going to be easy and we're just going to get the money right away. But I I do think that there is a lot of leverage that we have here and just take a little bit of time, but we have six months.
Yeah. Questions?
Um, a couple I had was on the Clackamas Caucus that's come together. What do you think? Do you have suggestions for us? It's kind of the best ways for us to kind of tap in, communicate with those folks moving forward. What's?
Yeah, absolutely. So, um, a couple of years ago before COVID, I was working with the government affairs community, not community, excuse me, government affairs director at the county. And he had suggested that together with the business community and then we kind of come together and create a Clackamas Caucus. So regardless of the party, it's everyone that represents the caucus, whether it's the Senate or the House, all get together. And I mean, just do a happy hour. So they all talk to each other. And that's what we did. And it really proved, they ended up starting to meet regularly. Like once a week, they all got together and really advocated for what Clackamas County needed. And so it ended up being really helpful. It was a really good coalition building experience. And even though they might not all agree on everything, they could come together for the county. And so we were going to, we generally hold that in January. But because session's starting so early, I think we're going to try and set something up in early February. But as many of you that are available to come, the more the merrier. It would be great. It'll, it'll probably be in Lake Oswego because everyone's going to be driving up from Salem. So it's a little bit of a hike, but it's, I think it would be really beneficial just to get to know everyone. Because we've got so many new legislators in that caucus, I mean, in the legislature in general, but in that caucus specifically. So.
Jordan, I didn't hear a dollar figure. Do we, do we know about what we're going to be asking?
I mean, we can, yeah, fourteen to fifteen, fourteen point seven million.
That's what it was last time. So we got, I mean, we always break the record.
So it was shockingly.
Fourteen point five, sorry.
I guess just broadly, what I would say is since we've engaged well with our federal delegation on wastewater with the for WIFIA financing with, you know, a million, but I've got a million earmark. We will want to do the same with our water infrastructure, obviously. So we need to start kind of telling that story with those guys. And but let me know anything I can do to help with that.
Well, and it would be nice to get, speaking candidly, it would be nice to get Congresswoman-elect De Rimer here to kind of see for the wastewater management. Just would, you know, it's fun to see it and see the need, even though we.
Yeah, I feel like we have, I mean, I I know the water is our focus, but the fact that we've got this more touring than place, that feels like makes us kind of special.
Yes.
Great way, but you know, just huge need to get it taken care of as soon as possible.
Absolutely. And we did have a meeting with the Nursery Association just to kind of have a conversation about what to do with the water once it is properly treated. And I mean, it's still very preliminary in the conversation, but it's just, I mean, I shared this with Jordan. It's, you know, it's not exactly a sexy conversation to say, let's dump it in the Sandy River. So, you know, to the extent that we can find alternatives that are environmentally friendly to dispose of the water, repurpose that water, that would be, that would be a great selling point, right?
I can do an ice rink.
Yeah, it would take so much water.
Well, thank you. I've been going to dash because I got to get back to Portland.
Drive, drive safe. Thank you, Nellie. Appreciate it. Oh, I'm sorry. Did I miss that council?
Councilor Exter's hand was up, but it's, it's, okay. Sorry about that.
All right, well, we'll move it forward to the SandyNet CBX residential IGA amendment. Great.
Thank you.
Greg, if you want to share those slides, I haven't let it up.
Oh, you did.
Do you want us to click through it for you? Or do you sort of want to sit over here?
I can sit over there if that's okay, just like. Right. Good evening, council. Tonight, I'm bringing for you an amendment to existing IGA from two thousand nineteen. Where Sandy, the city of Sandy and Clackamas County entered into an agreement to provide residential services for a pilot project up past Rhoda Dendron before government camp off of some forest service roads. The pilot project was selected to be able to see if both the county and the city could form a partnership to determine how well we would work together in providing ISP services. And so this test or pilot project passed one hundred and thirty-nine homes. I know in the staff report it said one hundred and forty-nine, that was a typo. I did confirm with the county it is one hundred and thirty-nine. And off of five or six forest service roads there where existing Clackamas County fiber already passed through. And since then, well, actually before that, we, the IGA defined two speed tiers that we offered, which were our current speed tiers back in two thousand nineteen, three hundred megabits up and down for sixty-four ninety-five. Where the city was able to keep twenty-four of those dollars and gigabit service for eighty-four ninety-five, where the city kept thirty-four of those dollars. So between the two entities, the revenue was split between Clackamas County and SandyNet. And the responsibilities were also split for this project here where the city would be the ISP and providing the service, the billing, customer support and relationship, and the county would build out, maintain and repair the fiber optic network. And there's also a note here, it said no requirements for reporting here. In two thousand nineteen, there were no reporting requirements, given that Clackamas County bootstrapped the program themselves. And there was no shared funds from any grants or or other funding sources. And I'm happy to say currently we have about thirty-five percent take rate up there among those one hundred and thirty-nine homes. Which isn't, which is much less than what we have inside our inside city limits here. But we still consider it successful, given that those homes are not occupied all the time. And a lot of time you, they can only be occupied for a certain amount of time and they're mostly second homes. It's hard to say exactly how many of the homes actually have internet service to begin with. But we do see a high number of those homes taking phone service as well, which is just additional over the top revenue. Some things that were concerned last time, when we first entered into the IGA that we have sort of demystified was the number of truck rolls and potential truck rolls that we would have up the, up the mountain there and the cost that would be incurred. Our team really kind of took on the challenge and tried to figure out how we could reduce the number of truck rolls necessary. And over the past two and a half years, I would say non-install related truck rolls, usually due to assisting a customer or a service related issue such as faulty hardware, we only had between three and five of those truck rolls there. And I'm sorry, I didn't get the exact number, given that it was two and a half years of appointments to sift through and for those. But we're happy to say that we were able to really put our brains together and come up and utilize the data provided by these systems to help us determine when to send out the county versus one of our own trucks and identify where the issue really lied. And so with that said, the key changes that we have here is now Clackamas County is proposing a couple of their new service territory locations, given their service model change, which is to utilize heavily the American Rescue Plan dollar for their network. Where they are now proposing that we actually shift the revenue sharing where we are actually receiving now forty dollars a month for this, of that sixty-four ninety-five. And sixty dollars a month of that eighty-four ninety-five for the gigabit service there. So it's kind of essentially flipped and that was due to no longer having a one-time cost of having to install the fiber themselves. It was now covered by the American Rescue Plan dollar. So their maintenance costs and their repair costs for the fiber have now flipped and reduced their plan significantly, which they just passed those, that revenue along to us in this change here. Additionally, we propose the change to switch the speed tier from three hundred megabits to five hundred megabits to bring everything in line with our recent change from this past July, just to make everything centralized around for all our campaigns and advertising and all of our presentation that we do for our speeds. But I already mentioned that the price model changes were related to ARPA there. And one of the other notes that is important on this slide here is that ARPA does come with reporting requirements. And the Department of Treasury does require certain things like speed tests, number of customers, which is data that we provide to Clackamas County on an annual basis. So as they roll in all of their existing customers into their more ARPA model, those will be required there. We've already kind of established what's required of those and have a model set up to be able to provide that information to them with ease. So the additional revenue coming into us helps cover those additional reporting requirements. So finally touching on the next, the service territories, which is kind of the bulk of this, is to remove the language that restricted it just to the Kiwanis area before and allow it to be able to be applied to a couple of additional areas. So we have identified, well, Clackamas County identified three service areas here, passing a potential of about two hundred and fifty homes all outside of city limits. Happy to say they're all within a couple of miles of city limits. So it's no longer up the mountain and at a far distance there, but right in our backyard there.
These are people that send us emails.
And they are, I think with a lot of the risks that we had identified before, that we've kind of resolved and taken a look at that this same model can be applied directly to these other service locations here. So those are kind of the changes that we brought forth in the IGA, asking for more of an amendment versus creating a new IGA and dissolve the old one. It was just change the existing one to account for new service areas and changes and lessons learned from two thousand nineteen there. And so I am happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, I'd be happy to move on in the staff report.
Yeah. Okay.
So I take it this is not within our UGB or UGR, right?
Yes, I don't know how much of it, I don't think the UGR does go to Colorado. If it does, it's only part.
So I guess my question is, or my concern is about, you know, trying to make sure that we have enough capacity for SandyNet to cover everything in our UGB and UGR. Because that's where, you know, that's where having that master plan to kind of go, where do we go next? What's our priorities? When we, when we need to be making decisions like what you're bringing to us tonight, not having a master plan for kind of what our priority areas are, and then how this affects those priorities is hard for me to kind of understand. So I don't know if there is a total capacity that we're going to tap out, like whatever the size of this building is that, you know, again, it's all kind of voodoo. I don't understand all the wires. It's too much. But my concern is just do, you know, I assume there's some sort of maximum capacity that we as a city can provide internet service to. And so then by giving it away to all these places outside of our UGB, which we are, you know, how does that affect? So that's my biggest concern and also my push for just making SandyNet even better by having a master plan. It kind of helps us define our priority areas for the next five to ten years. Cause I want to see it grow.
Yeah. And, I mean, sort of a, sort of an short answer to that is that there are capacity concerns that can happen over time. And it's usually, you have to add additional capacity that usually goes from saying, once you tap out on available resources, you buy a piece of equipment that then expands upon it. And that can be applied to workforce, space in a construction yard, number of employees, any number of different constraints that there might be there. So definitely identifying those through a master plan is usually one of our, our more long, is been set up to be our long-term goal. And I don't have it in place just yet, but I'm hoping in the next fiscal year to be able to set funds aside to actually bring someone in to help with it. I wasn't able to make it work this, this fiscal year though.
Thank you, Greg. Please proceed.
Okay, so with that, our recommendation here tonight is that staff respectfully request that council review, discuss and approve the proposed changes to the twenty nineteen SandyNet CBX IGA. And if, understanding that this was not brought forth during a work session there, if there is additional discussion or questions or adjustments that are proposed to be changed, we're willing to bring it back potentially as like a consent agenda item next, next meeting there. Otherwise, council would say they recommend that it be approved.
All right, awesome. Thank you. Thank you for the presentation, Greg. Very straightforward. I know a lot of work went into this on the last IGA with Arlo. It's nice to see how successful that was moving forward. And it's, it's like I said, I, I mean, I was only half joking, I mean, especially Colorado, Lusted, some of these areas here from a lot of their residents, our neighbors, I mean, not, maybe not right city of Sandy, but right on the outside. People whose kids go to school with our kids, people that we really care about. And it's, it's pretty incredible to continue to be a leader, you know, in this. It's, it's pretty cool. I see a hand up with Carl.
Can you hear me now? Okay. Yeah, I guess I, I don't want to spend a lot of time talking and agreeing with what the mayor just said. But I have a number of friends and some associates that are all in the Colorado and Lusted country and they all are really eager. I would expect, and maybe Greg, you could confirm or deny this, that this looks like it's going to be a fairly high take area, that it'll be a very productive concentration of connections. Is that, is that true?
I would hope for a hundred percent, but more realistically, I definitely think we're going to see a very high take rates in those areas. In, you know, we've, we used to supply wireless service out there before the technology reached its capacity and then became outdated. And we have tried multiple times to try to get fiber out there before. So we've gauged the assessment. I've got ten years worth of of call logs from individuals who have required, called in asking for service. The county has done their own study and identified it through one of their town halls that this is one of the most underserved areas. It's definitely a priority for them. And I've even joined a Facebook group to, that has upwards of already seventy members. And I believe there's between a hundred and thirty to a hundred and fifty homes out. And I believe there's uh between a hundred and thirty to a hundred and fifty uh homes out in that on that road. Um so there's a good number of response uh from individuals uh really eager to get fiber out there, and I think that that will continue to grow. So we're definitely expecting high take rates out there. Uh I would, I my guess would be uh at least in the eighties, if not higher.
What's your prompt on Facebook? Obviously.
Have to drive to town.
And I think that's true. I have, like I said, an associate who lives out in that Colorado road area. And it it's really miserable for him to have to do anything working on the internet, and that's his basic reason for business. So I really think this is the right spot to work on.
Right, yeah. I'd like to say thank you uh Greg on all your hard work on this. As the mayor said, you know, we, I have personally gotten many phone calls and and um and I've seen, been on the committees uh or been on uh some Zoom calls where they called into the county as well, especially around the Colorado road. They're very vocal. And rightfully so, we were vocal for ourselves to create our own ISP in here um in part of our our community around us. As we talked about, you know, making, you know, uh Sandy Net pay for itself, there's nothing better than having a partner that basically puts up all the cost and we just take take a a big chunk of revenue coming in. So um it's a win-win, not only for that, but for our community members around us that uh they may not live inside the city limits, but they call Sandy home, they shop here, kids go to school here. And they were one of the most affected uh by the pandemic, because uh they didn't have any type of internet service. And that's one thing that brought them to, you know, out to there. So in that, I make a motion that we approve the proposed changes to the existing Sandy Net um and CBX Kiwanis IGA from two thousand, September of two thousand and nineteen. It's for a second.
All second. Great. There's a motion by Councilor Pete Seld and a second by Councilor Hokinson. All those in favor signify by saying aye or give me a thumbs up. Aye, opposed nays or a thumbs down. Motion carries. All right. Thank you, Greg. Great presentation, Greg. Appreciate it. Thank you. Yeah. All right, Jordan, you're up. Report from City Manager.
I'm a hot seat.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Um first of all, I just want to say thank you to our staff, uh community members, everyone that's come out and uh the tree lighting, of course, and then the holiday lights in Mighty. Uh great job by Tiana, Brandon, Casey, Carol, of course, with fundraising. John, Michelle, Chelsea, uh whole team uh kind of put this dream uh to reality. Of course, you know, it goes back a few years of when the seed was planted from uh Lucy Pollian. Took and, you know, took some time to get there and have the staff in place to build it, um pull off adding more recreation programming as we emerged out of the pandemic and got that council direction that really needed more uh to bring the community together. And um I've said it how many times now with all these events, through the summertime and fall, and then, you know, another, I think, record attendance at the tree lighting, it's like every event now, uh it really shows that people are eager and and happy to come back from from all the the shutdowns of the last couple of years and actually enjoying these events. So uh thank you to staff for for doing that. Uh they they worked really hard in some cold weather and get those lights up. And I think it looks amazing, and um I think it's the start of something that's going to be really special for the for the years to come and build on every year uh to make it bigger and better. Uh speaking of holidays, a holiday lunch uh for for staff and council will be December fifteenth. Um more than welcome to to join us for for that time. Uh so Thursday at uh noon at the community center. Um update, a quick update on the moratorium, a hundred and two ERUs remaining during the moratorium period. Yeah, most, I think, all the all the eighteen that have been used up are single-family homes um at Chaley Meadows, and I think they're done now. I think they pulled all their permits. Um there, so I think you saw the the legislation and then the follow-up on the administrative rules of the mayor sent around some information about uh local jurisdictions setting speed limits. Uh there's a staff meeting next week uh to talk about that uh with our uh traffic engineer. You know, there's a few hoops to jump through, but it is something that we're we're looking at um and uh being able to pull off with our truck traffic engineer. Of course, working with council and through the transportation system plan, identifying the right areas that we want to do the reduction in speed limits um and and doing those traffic analysis studies. Uh I think you have to get pre-approved by ODOT training and some other things and administered rules. But I know Highway two eleven, Wolf Road, some other areas of town will be uh targets for us to to study. On the goal-setting uh dates, um it's been kind of hard to find find a a an available weekend. Um I think we had four respondents on the second survey that was sent out. Um February eighteenth is looking like the best date so far, but uh please weigh in if you haven't yet to see if we can firm up some possible dates for that. The mayor and I were talking about possibly doing a twofer where we do the all-day goal-setting with city council and really set goals and talk about council rules and things like that during that day, but maybe we can do work session. Have departments kind of present, you know, the status of current goals and what they're working on, things that they have on the horizon. So maybe we can save some time and yeah, uh attendance that way. And so we might be looking at filling some meetings uh that existing council meetings or uh additional maybe virtual work sessions or something in advance in January. Um interview panels, um I think are set up except for um scheduling for transit advisory board. We still need some respondents on uh the availability. Um and then I think we need to, we have interview panels needed for the planning commission. Um I think, uh we just got the resignation from Paulus.
Yeah, yeah, we have two. We got to fill now. Yeah, so since Chris quit his. So that's being advertised right now.
Okay, I'm sorry to see. So we can, we can wait, but we can set up the interview panel now if you guys want to.
Yeah, let's, yeah. Well, wh- why don't we just? I mean, don't we already have a pan? We already have a panel for the one, which I need.
Oh, we do. Do we have?
Didn't we already put together a panel? Or did we? Was that not one of them we put together on the last one? So who wants to be on the panel for planning?
I thought we were doing what we did on the last one, which was you, myself, Kathy.
Was that from a year ago or so?
Yeah, that was the one where.
Okay.
Yeah, I thought that's, I thought that's what we set up last time.
Well, no, that's, that was always the starting point. Yeah, that was always the starting place where we started.
I'm, you want to be on it?
Yeah. Okay.
Okay. Great. Um a follow, a few follow-up items from the last council meeting. Talking with Ryan about the tree at twenty-six and Langen Sand, this uh council expert brought this up. It does appear it's in the right way, so we'll have the arborists check that out. Um the condition of that tree, it's a large oak or maple that's there in the corner. You know, our projects are all substantially complete. I think we talked about the the Vista um sidewalk and then the ADA improvements. The the street sweeping, um it's a perennial question. Of course, now it's covered with the ice and snow. Uh the leaves are.
Kept it from slipping. I went running this morning, uh so it didn't fall, because he ran on those.
And they've been doing a pretty good job. Um there is a, there, you know, they all kind of came down.
Just figure out what happens every year.
Times, but there's a few private roads that they don't, you know, hit as part of their the routes, because they're private drives or there's some of those alleyways, and so especially in those neighborhoods over there.
This is on DeMarco.
Okay. Well, no, come back to DeMarco a couple of times. And i- is part of that, you know, actually staff in 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 Public Works have done a good job uh this last year, actually doing some research on the potential. I know this has happened before, but bringing it sweeping in-house, large capital costs.
Yeah.
Uh but then there's a breaking point on operations over time, and.
Sir, you guys, you guys are so wild. Like, we just had like a twenty-minute conversation on capacity in public works.
Well, this is adding capacity. If you add a body, what's the sweep? So anyways, just, you know, this is a future.
Actually, you know what? I I heard the mayor say he's always wanted to drive a Zamboni. He can pretend.
You know, cities now, they get into like naming competitions. You know, like, this is, you know, just just putting that out there is maybe you'll see in the future someday that we might be big enough to start thinking about that. Laying it back to. All right, that's, all right. Thank you. Uh appreciate that. Great update. Uh even though you walked all over my update on that.
Carl, you're up.
You skipped me.
No, you could, you guys just messed with me being at home. Uh yeah, Don, you're up. My apologies. Lean is sitting in Carl's seat, and it's just, it's really messing with me.
So a couple of items. First of all, this, the community campus uh subcommittee will be meeting a week from tomorrow. So that's a change from its earlier date, so we can review the RFPs and things and and uh get ready to bring that proposal back to council. And uh want to thank Rochelle for the um the terrific job in Mighty Park. I'm I'm so excited about that. I mean, my voice doesn't convey my excitement, but it was really cool to see it Thursday and uh uh inspired me to go to get my own laser lights for my house. So thank you. But um you mentioned some talking about traffic and speed zones and things, and this is something that I've been talking to a few of you about since uh we went to that uh thing out in Bend. I I would like to see us move forward as quickly as possible, whether it can be done under this budget or next budget, to get a couple uh traffic monitors, those those um lit things that tell you how fast you're coming to to mark that twenty-five mile per hour zone when we're coming on twenty-six. I, people go through there and it, there's a big difference between the speed people drive through without those lit up things and the speed people drive with them. I I think it's a deterrent. I think it does slow people down, and so I think we should have it there. And they're not much money. We don't, we only have one traffic officer. I don't know, he's full of part-time to traffic enforcement. I think this gets us a big bang for our buck. The other part to think about is a trailer-mounted unit that we can go and put out when the neighbors complain. We can put it out there. They can collect data. They can run them in stealth mode. I can't hear you, Mayor.
Oh, I've done this because I shouldn't be speaking over you, Don. I apologize. We were, we were, someone said they thought we might have one of those fans. I said, I thought it might have been broken, but I don't.
We used to. We used to, yeah, but we don't now. Once again, they're not much. To get the full trailer, you're still less than ten thousand dollars, which is cheap compared to the price of a traffic officer. So I think that's something I'd like to see a proposal brought forward from staff, if you guys are supportive of it, to acquire those and get them in our critical areas, because people are coming through that downtown corridor too fast and um big trucks, they're blowing through red lights, and and we're going to have uh people hurt.
God, I think you have, you have some nodding heads, but you also have chiefs sitting in here. We're going to be going through our budget cycle here real soon, and I'm sure it will be a topic for that. That's great.
Yeah, and I don't know if the permanent signs would be the police department or public works. I think they'd be public works, wouldn't they?
Oh, I don't even know. Okay, they're they're nodding. So, yeah.
We're going to lock one more thing on their plate. Well, just one more.
Okay, thank you, Don. Appreciate it. Uh Carl.
Yeah, I'm not going to add anything to anybody's plate at this point. Uh I just, uh, first off, say thank you to those like Don and Rochelle who have just carried on while I was sick in the last two weeks, felt really uncomfortable and a little bit guilty, because I couldn't keep up with things. But it's sure great to be able to know that even though maybe someone like myself who've been pulled off the on the the bench for some sickness, that the rest of the world continues on, and that's such a great job. I appreciate that. And I'm kind of watching the lighting and the tree thing and, you know, things that are going on. And I I just, it's great to see that the city does have a lot of people doing a lot of different things. So so thank you for those who carried on and for me and didn't make me feel too badly, because I missed the meetings, but hopefully I can start making those meetings again. And with that, I'm glad to be back.
Thanks, Carl. Glad to see you on the mend. Uh Kathleen.
Uh yeah, I would like to echo about the great job on the light ceremony thing. I missed it. I had to go up to Seattle Friday and just got back last night. So I'm planning to go out uh here um in the coming week to see them. The library board is meeting on the seventh, and just the agenda talks about the hoodland rent um and also the library district, I think that's the Clackamas Library District Advisory Committee uh updates that we'll get from one of the people on our board that's uh on that county board. Um and then lastly, I'm just going to kind of make a plug again for my um having some sort of a crosswalk there at the Tickle Creek Trail east of uh the the DeBarco, you know, on DeBarco, but east of the um sidewalk crossing down below where where it does come. Yeah, just having, you know, the the neighbors there have really kind of been making the point of that and keep telling them all, bring it up. So thanks for all your hard work. I appreciate it. I will not make it to the appreciation day, but I will be there in spirit. I'm, that's the day of the big uh. Uh we are doing the Kiwanis gift baskets, the great job, court partnership with the um senior center and the fire department and the and the Kiwanis. And uh that's the day when all the toys get delivered, and so I'm putting all the toys together. So um, yep, I won't be there, but I'll, I want to kind of just give you guys a kudos for all your hard work. Thank you.
Um Kathleen, one thing to consider, uh Nellie's real, one of the real pros with her, I think she's really connected with the Clackamas County government. And I know some of the previous comments you brought up with Hoodland and all that, she may be someone you consider kind of dropping on to uh to really help out some of them, maybe. Um Brett.
There's been a lot said about the lights. I think they're wonderful, and I just been very well expressed the gratitude, so just leave it at that. So uh in the last election, Ballot Major one fourteen passed, um which has potential ramifications on the city. I realize it's uh it's coming up before the courts and someone will probably say this week. But I'd like to get a break here, because I know it's an unfunded mandate that's going to fall down on the cities. I'd like to know how it's going to affect us uh moving forward and our staff and that, and how and how it looks, how we're going to handle the permitting process to make sure that our citizens. Those remarks. Thank you, Rich.
Yeah, uh well, I am going to talk a little bit more about the lights. Uh so uh Saturday uh with the Grinch uh went up and they had a thirty to forty-person deep line all night long. People lining up with rabbits and cats.
It was crazy.
Yeah, it was, it was awesome. It was awesome. Uh so uh just a super great event uh to to kick off this this uh, you know, holiday season. Uh the Kiwanis were there handing out cookies. I think their table was almost empty by the time they were done. And uh they had hot chocolate and uh just rum was there, and it was just a great, great event. So uh super excited to see the rest of them as they roll out. And uh Sandy helping hands, I know, was was doing the Grinch, and uh just a a great, I, you know, I think aside from the lights, one of the things that I like is just the collaboration with the community groups. And uh so super excited to see and and looking forward to what we can, what we can add to it in the coming years, so.
Yeah, uh we had an economic development meeting um here, uh time flies, a couple of weeks ago, you know, whatever it was. Um and uh and so we, our consultant that we have um came in and gave uh us an update on the strategic plan, which I'm really excited for all of you guys to get to see that here. I'll be off the council at that time, but um really uh the progress they've made. And it just shows what you do when you hire the right firm, professional firm, come and do the stuff that that's what they do all day. And uh so I'm really excited to see uh that come about and get adopted potentially by you guys, uh Chris, uh in uh this next coming year, with the whole conflict and thing. Uh yes, the park lights are amazing. Uh what a wonderful, great job, and I just look forward to years coming. You know, that park doesn't get used in the winter uh like it does in the summer, and so. Oh, it's a little dark, but with the lights, we can do it easily. Uh but, you know, just where that comes, you know, ten years from now. I uh I did a picture with Santa down at the community center yesterday. Did you hear about it? I wasn't Santa. Uh I know I'm old. All right, so um but no, it was great. It was uh D thirty-one helped sponsor that. Um and I was explaining, John uh was there uh and uh he's fairly new, and so, you know, uh no one knows who I'm in Sandy anyway, so I introduced myself, but I chatted with him for a while, and because everyone in that whole building is new. Like, except for Carol, the entire staff, uh crew and parks and everything, just we were talking for a while about that. And but uh, yeah, what a great event. Um I explained about uh how we used to have, like, you know, breakfast with Santa, and like, no one knew about that. And I'm like, that was only three years ago. And I'm like, that was only three years ago, but because of COVID, how that event has changed so much. And, and, and glad that they were able to step up and do that, lines up, you know, donations were going to Meals on Wheels. For that, what a great, uh, how the community came together to, to put that on, um, get that there. And we even had snow for it. Santa was late because he was putting in the snow. That's what we told the kids. But, uh, yeah, it just got chalked with John. It just great hires that, uh, Jordan, your staff have, you know, flowed down and done, um, across the tires. Something didn't write down what it was, uh, uh, anyway, yeah, it's, it's going to be hard. We miss it.
Yeah, yeah, we'll miss you. Uh, well, we all knew it was going to be some of the Christmas lights. Um, just, uh, it's all been said. But just awesome, you know, it's just incredible. And, um, the team members, uh, here at the city that made it happen, I think is probably, to me, probably the most special part. Because it's all the different departments, you know, everything from our library, department handling the tree lighting, the parks erect, the public works, uh, our, our police. Just everyone that made it happen. It's just, it's, it's pretty cool. Um, the other is, is, uh, walking around, we have neighbors that live three or four doors down from us that we saw in the park and haven't talked in the last two years. But we stood there in the parks, you know, lights and catching up about our families and talking, right? And that's, that's the cool part about this is I saw someone online wrote, where did I get my tickets? Or where do I, you know, line up? And someone goes, you, you can just show up. If we want to chat through that, well, it's getting late. I don't know. But if we wanted to, we could just leave here and go stroll through the park and walk through those lights. Uh, so sort of this really cool community event, uh, that, as mentioned, I think we can grow. I mentioned cops, shop with the cops, saw, saw that happening. It just continues to grow and expand. And it's just a tremendous service, uh, that you guys do for our community and thank you for that. Uh, Nellie gave her presentation. Uh, we talked at the bypass queue up a little bit. And it, it hit me for her ability to help us with that because of a skill set she all, she has. I just wanted to really bring up it. She's tied in, uh, really tightly with the Clackamas Business Alliance, Economic Alliance, different groups here. Where I think not only does she have experience in the building with the state legislature, but it's going to help us reach out with our county government. And some of the things that we want to get done on the staff level. Uh, Jordan mentioned she was out here and we did our tour. I briefly mentioned it. Uh, get out to the, uh, I, I know we all don't want to go do that tour of the wastewater treatment. And I know it's cold out there, but I guarantee you it's a lot better to do it now than it is in July and August. Uh, consider going out there and looking around at it. The updates, uh, you can see it, like even laymen like us that look at it and don't quite, you know, understand all that. There are remarkable, significant differences that you could see. And thank you to our team and, and public works and everything for the hard work and the investments that are going on out there. Um, committee assignments, uh, I've heard from a lot of you, some of you, you know, you are that I haven't heard from. It doesn't have to be an email, it can be a phone conversation or something. It's something that isn't of immediate need to get done. But as we get into our council and Chris joining us, we'll want to get those done. But I do want to talk to everybody about those, um, those assignments. Uh, and then just to wrap up, uh, speed limits, um, uh, that went around. Sounds like a lot of good work to be done on that. Uh, thank you for that. Uh, with that, uh, stick around for the exec session, but I will adjourn our meeting. Thank you, everybody. Appreciate it.